Okay, we're about 15 seconds away from going. Steve, are you on there? Thank you. I'd like to call the Kansas State Department, or Kansas State Board of Education, meeting back to session. And first thing on our agenda this afternoon is an update on the Math and English Language Arts Standards, a review, excuse me. No, we're not, I'm sorry, we're not there. I jumped ahead. No. No, we're, 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 I'm sorry. I was a page ahead. I was optimistic. I was, uh, okay. I just scared everybody. I was, I'm already moving ahead. To act on recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Task Force on teacher vacancies and supply, here with us today is Dr. Weaver, Rudy Perez, and Scott Myers, and Susan Helbert, to talk to us about the next steps.
Yes, sir. We're pleased to be here today to follow up on last month's, first time we presented information to you, from all the good works from the Blue Ribbon Task Force. And like I said, this is the next step toward realizing that important work. It's an opportunity for us to allow you the opportunity to ask more questions, follow-up questions of any and all of us, provide a little bit more context of where, from when all this work hails, provide some actual staff thoughts, the KSDE thoughts behind, reactions to the recommendations, and then we do have for you recommended actions that you might consider by the end of our time together. So, to get things started, we're bringing back Dr. Weaver and Rudy Perez as the co-chairs, who very aptly led the work of the standard, of the Blue Ribbon Task Force. And they are here, basically without any kind of presentation in hand. It's a resetting of the stage, maybe a little bit more brief reminder of how this came to be, and then follow up with any questions you might have from last meeting. From there, myself and Susan will walk through the response that the KSDE has put together for you. So with that, Dr. Weaver and Mr.
Thank you very much. We're pleased to be back in front of you today. We presented last month the final report of the task force, the final report. It really is, what we hope is, the beginning of an ongoing opportunity to analyze, gather and analyze data about teacher vacancies and supply, to provide you with ongoing information that can help not only you, but the State Department of Education deliberate and understand more clearly exactly what is the status of teacher vacancy and supply in the state of Kansas, and also, as different interventions and strategies are implemented, how effective are those? You know, when Commissioner Watson gave the charge, organized the task force and gave the task force the charge, one of the questions asked at our first meeting is, well, how are we going to assess all this? How are we going to know if what we're attempting to do is going to be successful? And the Commissioner responded, you know what? There's just one assessment: increasing the supply of teachers. That's the assessment. And so, that's, that's our focus. We talked last month about, you know, some of the, some of the, some of the needs for the data. For example, if you remember the table, that included the list of all the reasons why teachers were leaving the teaching profession in Kansas. There was that, that no reason given, 500. Well, see, that, that could really help further illuminate what really is going on with our current teaching force if we had a better idea of the reason for those 500 teachers, or the reasons for those 500 teachers to leave the teaching profession in Kansas. Perhaps, you know, and there could be any number of reasons, but we just don't know.
And go on with, Dr. Weaver said, you know, and I know you've gone through that, as we went through that, there's a lot of recommendations, a lot of suggestions, some of them are, that we talked about. We had a professional standards board meeting last week, and Scott and Susan will allude to that, and we talked about the recommendations of what is feasible, what isn't feasible. We had some really good discussion on that. So, as we lead forward, again, as Dr. Weaver was saying, this is going to be a continuing thing, and it's going to be, have to have quite a bit of longitudinal study to make sure that we're going in the right direction.
I would add that in the report, the first part of the report, prior to the recommendations, as we were trying to understand the data clearly, so that we would have that clarity on which to base the recommendations that we proposed, there were, the three issues that we presented to, to you were the vacancies, fortunately not that many, but clustered: southwest Kansas, Wichita, Topeka. That the, from the Title II data, that the 25 teacher preparation programs across the state housed in the public and private institutions in Kansas showed about a 2,300 decrement over the last three years in the number of students majoring in teacher preparation. And finally, the distribution of teachers by years of experience and the region of the state from which they, from which they were from, showing that, you know, about 22% of the teachers in Kansas last year had four years or less of experience. And if you expand that out to nine years or less of experience, it was 40%. So that retention, professional development, retention of early career teachers is also very important for ensuring that we continue to have a solid supply of teachers in Kansas.
In addition, that we also talked about how, you know, important mentoring is for retaining and maintaining that staff, and that, that's a thing that came out again and again, was that mentoring program is very important in order to retain those teachers.
Well, a couple of thoughts. This is a nationwide issue.
Yes.
I was recently in Washington, and this was a point of, I wouldn't say lengthy, but certainly intense conversation. Within that, I would relay a message that was provided to me by the Chair of the Board in Nebraska, saying thank you to Kansas for sending them so many teachers. Ouch. Ouch. They had a shortage, and I guess their shortage isn't quite as short as it used to be. We've helped them solve their problem, which was rather distressing. Not said in a, in a mean or mean-spirited way, but just an alert. There are a lot of issues that are there, and what you presented in terms of possible solutions. And it's a little bit overwhelming, as I read it, you know, wow, gotta do all this? I'm not even sure I agree with all this. I'm not even sure I have enough information to agree with it or not to agree with it. You know, because it came from, from the committee, who, who had vested ownership of it. You know, and more explanation would certainly be needed. So, you know, one of the things that I've talked to Randy about for the board, because I, I'm ill-prepared, in my role, or as a board member, to just vote and say, I agree with everything that's in here.
Sure.
You know, I can accept your report, you know, understanding that there's going to be, we're not accepting every one of these to become an item of action by the board or by the Department of Education, but I'm, I'm ill-prepared. I need a lot more conversation on it. And one of the things I recommended to Randy was that we've begun this retreat format, that as your next committee moves forward in studying the issues, that we have a retreat, you know, as a board, as we're doing tomorrow on early childhood, to have a better, more focused conversation as a board, and more conversation with the committee as well as others to find out what direction we're going. So even though that's not one of the recommendations in here, I would alert the board that that is one of the recommendations that we're going to follow, in terms of being able to be more conversant and fluent in this language of, of supply and demand. You know, another thing that really concerns me is the fact of the, for years I've been living with the graying of the teacher ranks, and now all of a sudden I've got all these youngsters, you know, which presents a leadership problem, issue, you know. You can talk about mentorship, but if you don't have a lot of mentors, it's not going to work very well.
Right.
That, we, we should be concerned about that. And at the same time, the legislature, and those are concerned for a lot of reasons, about having retirees come back into the workforce. Our most experienced and talented are almost being asked, you know, shoved aside almost, you know, and that's a big concern for me as well. But there are certainly other issues and concerns on the board, you know, that we can address here. Other, Dina Horst?
Thank you. And I concur with some of the, most of the statements that you made about not perhaps knowing enough about all of the background for the decisions that you made. So that makes me a little hesitant to actually approve it, where it would start becoming more of a, the focus of the department. And I would rather that we actually study them as well, even though I respect and, and believe you've uncovered a lot of, of the issues that we certainly need, and perhaps some that we might not even think, to even think about. But this morning, one of our citizens in citizen forum mentioned the comprehensive science component, and I guess I'd like to know a little more about why you think that having comprehensive science would, would be good for students in high school.
I would, I'll answer that. I think, I think the comprehensive issue comes up, especially when you're dealing with smaller school districts. We have a lot of small school districts where you only have one teacher, and if that teacher has to get that many more endorsements, has to be that specific, to me, it creates a hurdle of being able to get a qualified, a good teacher in that, for your, for your students. So you're going to have to do other things. And I think a lot of that was, had to do with that. And also, you know, we talked about, you know, one of the, the recommendations was, was to create a, a committee under the professional standards board to look at this on a long-term basis, which I think would, would address a lot of those problems, which I think, we talk about comprehensive, we talk about any license search, that is, is under the professional standards board, and I think that's, has had a lot of discussion about that.
So the concern was more for smaller, the smaller districts and the, the issues they have in, in finding, for example, a physics teacher when they maybe have a biology teacher, but not a, a person that's licensed to teach physics.
From my point of view.
Is, is that sort of what you're, what you're saying?
Yeah, from, from the discussion I have with, a lot of those in the committee that had the discussion, that we had that discussion about comprehensive license search, that was their gist, I've got, I've got to hire someone, but if I can't do that, I've got to be able to, to get somebody in that classroom, and comprehensive would help me do that, so that I can get me a teacher in that classroom. And as you know, what Dr. Weaver talked about, you look at southwest Kansas, you look at the Wichita area, Kansas City, Kansas area, they're having a hard time filling those, those positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that, in the report, that we could probably stress a little bit more, if not a lot more, is that we're not just trying to fill vacancies, we want to fill vacancies with highly qualified, talented teachers, committed teachers. We're not just looking to, sometimes it's misunderstood by the public when we say we want to fill a position. It's not just filling that position so when the master class schedule, I can make sure I've got those kids in a class, and, and somebody's at least in front of them. You know, the education that is provided is also one of our, our main goals as well. So in terms of, of, I'm not sure I, that's where the conversation, what Dina was saying, I'm not sure about the comprehensive, but I do know this, that ongoing training and in-service is an essential element. You know, I'll just bring, for example, taking teachers that were in fact highly qualified teachers, and providing them the, the support and training, and ongoing support and training for Project Lead the Way, changed their whole view of science education, you know, and, and was, they were quite frankly startled by it, by how much it changed them, and made them better teachers. And they were already good teachers, if not very good teachers. So ongoing training for those that are there, as well as those that enter in our profession, you know, is very important. But it's, this isn't, this is not about just putting a body in front of a group of kids, so we can say we've got somebody that's qualified, but they're really not. You know, I, I don't want that to come out of this report.
Actually, I think the report's very clear about, you know, presenting teaching as a career, teaching as a profession.
Yes, and that, that support. We, we don't want to lose them, because that's another factor of teachers leaving within the first, you know, one to three years, if not five years. If we can keep them for the three, we usually got them, but we lose them at five too. So, you know, maintaining your force of, of highly qualified teachers is just as important as, as encouraging, inviting, and supporting those who are entering, entering the profession. You know, and that's one of the things we talked about last month in our, in budget recommendations, is to put more money into staff development. You know, not just to give more money to the schools, just to give it to them, but we value as a state board, you know, ongoing, you know, education, professional development, you know, as, as an individual teacher, you know, in their subject areas, you know. So that's important. Jim Porter?
Thank you. I just need a clarification. Accepting this report appears, and correct me, where my thinking is wrong, and I'm sure that you won't have a trouble doing that. Accepting this report, I think, is the beginning of the conversation. You know, accepting this report, unless I'm wrong, is not saying we're going to implement this. It means that we've started the conversation, and I've got some of the same concerns that others have, but I, I don't think accepting the report with our thanks, because I think this is tremendous, good work, says, okay, now that we have these recommendations, it's time for us to start through the professional standards board, or, or the, our further work of the Blue Ribbon Task Force, to start actually getting, letting others get into the weeds, and, and determining how best to implement. Is that, am I, is my understanding correct?
Yes. I, I thank you for that clarification. Accepting this report does not mean that we are turning this, all of these items into action items. You know, it's accepting the report, and then creating the, the committee after that, the Supply, Vacancy and Supply Committee, as a subcommittee, and moving forward. You know, there's much work to do. We don't have the, the internal capacity to initiate the multiple recommendations. They all came from different vantage points, as you said, in the different, you know, sub-areas, and that would be, that would consume all of us. You guys had a lot of recommendations.
Well, and, and, you know.
Few stones were left unturned.
By, by design. And so it was not to, in any way, you know, put you all on the spot, that was not, you know, you have to decide immediately, or in a month, or whatever. But it was to try to convey the, our sense of the scope of what's happening, and the opportunities that we see that are out there, to, to affect change, and that it is bigger than just the State Board of Education. So we've got recommendations for the state legislature, we've got recommendations for the public and private preparers of teachers, we've got recommendations for Kansas Board of Regents, we have a recommendation for, you know, any, any group that has anything to do with, with education in Kansas, public or private. So, you know, we, we, we came as a, as a task force to, to adopt a comprehensive view of this, of this, this challenge.
I'd have to agree heartily that it's, we got here for a number of reasons, and we will get out of this predicament for a number of initiatives. We just have to be very strategic about our efforts, and understand our scope of responsibility, and our role as a partner in solving this with other entities who have stakes in it as well.
And we also, I mean, you know, local chambers of commerce, they've got a role to play. Community infrastructure, governments have a role to play. So, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for partnerships, a lot of opportunities for relationship building, but it is with the end goal of making sure that every child has an outstanding teacher, everywhere in the state.
Being in a small school district in western, actually, western Nebraska, and we thought long and hard, how are we going to get somebody to move here? You know, that, that's a challenge. And then when they do arrive, get them to stay. You know, it, it, it's huge, you know, and not solved by just platitudes and, and attaboys, but by concentrated, focused, you know, on meeting the needs of both the, the individual teacher, as well as the needs of the community, and that, and the school district. So it's, it is a, one size does not fit all.
That's correct.
You know, and then being in a large school district like Wichita, and thinking just because you're in a large district, oh, everybody's going to want to be here, that didn't work either. Again, and we were, and in Wichita, we were very committed to the Grow Your Own, you know, teacher program, starting with programs that were in high school for those who had visions of being in that career, and supporting them in high school, as well as helping students as they proceeded through college, you know, their choice, and, in terms of freshmen through graduation. You know, so it's, it's a long and, and committed process that we have to be part of, that's going to be unique to about every district, but there are those commonalities that we have to, you know, support, as well as uniqueness. Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have read your report, and I really appreciate all the work that you guys in your committee did, because there's a lot of the, a lot of work in there. I've also took a sneak peek at the rest of your PowerPoint, and it looks like we've got a lot of other conversation that you're providing for us, and maybe some specific recommendations of how we go forward, because I would agree with my other colleagues, you know, there's a lot of things here, and, you know, we can't do everything, certainly not all at once, but I'm going to be interested to hear the rest of, it looks like KSDE and all sorts of other things, we're going to hear from, some other information, is, is that accurate?
That's accurate. Scott will be back up here to present that content.
Okay, well then I'll kind of hold my comments till we hear some of that information. Thank you.
Sally Cobble?
Thank you very much. I too, I just loved your report. I have a question. In our board packet, there's a map on 89, page 89. It's got the map, and it's on the rural opportunity zones.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm going to show my ignorance a little bit here. I guess that's the map. The county, the, the counties with the stars, the students can be reimbursed for student loans?
Yep.
That's correct. But are they reimbursed state or federal? It says, and I didn't know if that was part of the rural opportunity that Kansas developed, or whether it was federal.
That is a Kansas program.
That is a Kansas.
And the reason I know that, because that's, my, my son's going through that right now.
Okay.
And, and really, you do not even have to have attended a Kansas school.
That, as long as you teach in one of these counties.
Or as long as you're in a public service.
Or public service.
Like my son works for KDOT, you could actually do that, you would be eligible. Any type of public service, you're eligible for the Ross Grant.
And that program has not been cut?
No.
Okay.
But I'm worried, no.
Thank you. Now, in the counties that don't have those stars, can you, can you tell me why not? Because I've got three or four of those districts, and I know they are having extreme amount of trouble finding teachers and those. I do think there's some type of federal program, and I don't, I want to know, my question is, did you look in to see if there was a federal program, like a Title I school, that the teachers can be reimbursed for student grants on a federal level? Do you know that? Maybe Susan knows that.
I, I do know that there are, there are programs right now that are, well, and those are year by year, right? A lot of, well, depending on which one you're on. But so, right now, they're, what I've heard is just kind of, they may not be there in five years, or whatever. There are, there's actually quite a few of them.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I've just got a lot of those white squares in my district, and I've got a lot of vacant positions in those districts, and I didn't know whether that would help students, you know, and I, I just wanted to know why. Thank you. I really appreciate the work that your school, I mean, that your committee did. I've had these feelings for years about the district I represent, but I've never had any numbers to actually put to them, and so I appreciate you putting that all together. Thank you.
Sally, I'm going to attempt to answer your question and jump in here. This is what I believe to be true, but I'll need to verify. The, the rural opportunity zones was, was created by the governor and the legislature in a way to try to grow underpopulated counties and counties that were declining in population. I believe, and this is what I need to verify, that counties could opt in or out of the education part of that. And so if you look at Logan County, for example, doesn't have a star, but they're not participating in the, in the student loan repayment part of that rural opportunity zone. So that's what I believe to be the case. I want to verify that. So you were asking the question, why do some have stars, and why do some not? The rural opportunity zones were counties who were losing population, and we were trying to encourage young people in particular to go to those counties and start businesses and, and, and live, and, and take jobs. And I believe, and within that, there also could be student loan repayments, and, you know, if a county would agree to participate. I want to double-check that for you, but I believe that's the difference.
I understood it to be business. I didn't realize it had a school part with it, and maybe what Logan County needs is to just go talk to their county commissioners, too.
It may be that.
It may be as simple as that. But what I was really worried about, Randy, was my Ellis, my Ford. Now Ellis isn't having the problem that Ford, Finney, and Seward, but they've also got that combination problem of housing there, along with meeting, needing clientele. So, no, I was aware of the rural zone, but I didn't know it had an education component to it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Can we proceed with the report?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And thank you.
Okay, as we continue on with this, we, as the KSDE and the Teacher License and Accreditation Team, we fully applaud the efforts that have been taking place throughout the years around this area, but specifically this more formalized approach with a place in the, in the sun, if you will. And we are, we do look forward to the work continuing. We did review the recommendations, all 61 of them, and you do have a document that says, shows the, the recommendation, our response as to what we think about it, estimated timeline if we were to go forward, go toward that particular recommendation, and then the details behind that, okay? We fully acknowledge, as has been said more than once, it's not a good idea to try to address all 61 at all. And so what we'll be asking for today is just a general broad, our recommendation is a broad recommendation of action to send this back to the standards board as a whole, no specific one. We looked at it through a couple of different filters, the pace at which it might, you know, immediate, intermediate, or long-term, in order to achieve one of the recommendations. We also looked at it from the lens of what group might be engaged with the particular recommendation. There were eight different groups represented that are in the response from the KSDE, including the state board, the legislature, individual districts, higher ed, chambers of commerce, list goes on to, there's eight of them. The, we also broke down into the KSDE and the state board involvement, and Susan will be going through one of those areas, and that's the area where And Susan will be going through one of those areas, and that's the area where we have direct action and/or influence. The other two, which we won't spend time on today in public, deal with the supportive roles that KSDE and the State Board would have, and then more of an ancillary role, which deals more with politics and fiscal. The holistic thoughts, like I said, this is a great, great, good effort, and we want to look at it from the standpoint of what is, what will be the greatest good as far as achieving the goal of providing excellent educators in every classroom across the state of Kansas. There's long-term work and there's more quick work that needs to be done. So awareness of the situation is a major piece of this. Data quality and getting as quality of data as we can possibly have over the next several years will help inform actions in the future. And obviously, it's important to continually bring a spotlight to the work that's taking place and the, bring more of a respect to the profession and bringing attention to the issue that we do face. So the categories of recommendation, as I just mentioned, are these three. Major roles deal morally with policy and licensing efforts, communication options to the field, creating the actual committee, that is part of the actual recommendation we have for you today, and engaging in a positive marketing plan as we move forward. So Susan will talk, will walk through the next three slides, which are the areas where the Kansas State Department of Education and the State Board of Education are able to play a more immediate role in.
Okay, so a lot of the recommendations fell under the broad category of communication or what we might call awareness. And if you, there's kind of two levels. So information to administrators, what was that all about? That's more of that idea that you've worked real hard, you've made a lot of licensing changes over the past few years and you've created some innovative kinds of credentials. But there seems to be, how do we get the word out? How do we inform the administrators that these are available? So that level of awareness, certainly, we play a role in that partnering with our communications team to build on what we already have available, the wheel, the chart, but kind of enhancing means to that, supporting us going out to the field. Scott and I and one of the other assistant directors had the opportunity to go out to Garden City earlier this summer and then to Wichita to present to groups of administrators in both of those areas. And it was great because they said, wow, I didn't know about that. And they had specific examples where in most cases we could say, well, here, this will work for this situation. So we do acknowledge that, you know, that's a great, great idea. We need to get the information, what we have available now, out there. And then when you look at communication on a larger scale, if you read through all of the recommendations, there was a lot about promoting teaching as a career and how you do that. So one of the recommendations was to create a media blitz, a public relations campaign. We think that's a great idea. Again, it would require partnering with our communications team, other KSDE directors to come up with a plan on how we do this public relations campaign. But again, it's all about promoting awareness, promoting the profession, getting information out to school districts, to students when they're in high school on, hey, look at education is a great career, talking about the different pathways in education. Did you know you could be a counselor in a school system, a library media specialist, not just a classroom teacher? And promoting, I mean, we struggle a little bit with explaining about the scholarship and the grant opportunities that are available out there to support you to go through, loan forgiveness programs. So how do you get that information out to parents, to students? There was a lot about districts creating the future teacher kinds of programs, providing mentors to students to create, generate that interest. So again, this is a place that requires a lot of partnering, not just with KSDE. Certainly, we can try to pull together a media awareness or a public relations type of campaign, but we all need to work as partners, KSDE, the higher ed folks. You know, once you get students on your campus, again, how do you tell them about the opportunities in education and who's going to help pay for that, what kinds of scholarships? And then, of course, our education partners like KNDA, how do we get them involved in this? So that's what the recommendations about communication, awareness, and again, it's all about getting people into the teaching pipeline, which was the main goal of the committee to begin with. Establishment of a standing committee, that's going to be our major recommendation for today, that again, this is a start, but there needs to be a continuing committee that looks at this, helps find real solutions, more concrete proposals, digs into it a little bit deeper. And obviously, I think this is a must for continuing this effort. So certainly, the Teacher Recruitment and Retention Center that's listed here was one recommendation. It was an example of what one state has created. So that would be something that the Vacancy and Supply Committee could investigate, whether there's a need for that. So standing committee, certainly, that's probably one of the most important things to continue this effort. Okay, we've already talked a lot about data, but let's think about what were our data sources for the task force? We collect a lot of data. Our licensure system has a lot of data. How many special ed teachers do we have that are available to teach? But the bulk of the data came from the Education Data Collection System. That's a fancy name for what we call EDCS. That's that reporting system that the districts report all of their personnel data, you know, who they hired, that's where we get the exit, the entrance reasons. So over the years, we've tried to improve that system because our main goal with data is cleaner data, more accurate, and that it drills down to the piece of information that we really need that's most useful so that we have real, true data to help us guide us in our policies and procedures. The data not only comes from self-reported data from the district that we collect and then report back out to you. We normally give you a licensed personnel report this time of year, but that data is a big piece of what this task force used. So this year, if you look in your current version that we handed out today of the final report, you'll notice that we captured as the final appendix, the licensed personnel report that summarizes that data for you. So you might want to take a look at this. You know, one piece of that is some of those new credentials that you created, you know, we've doubled, we're still tiny numbers, but if we keep doubling, eventually, those will really be a big help. So I wanted to point out that you can, you will see that, and we'll publish that on our website today, too, the LPR stuff. Things like the KEAB, we don't have a lot of control, but we certainly can partner with that and encourage districts and perhaps in the next couple of years, say that all vacancies need to be reported and advertised through the KEAB so that we start to collect more complete information. As far as the vacancy reporting, that was important enough that we build in a whole vacancy collection reporting system within EDCS. And as a result of the task force, we've already made some changes. That opens up September 1st for this year, or it's due, it's at the beginning of the school year. So we've already made some tweaks, but certainly, as we move forward, we need to consider, maybe there's ways that, you know, better training for districts so that they can report accurately, they understand what they need to report to us, and maybe come up with better collection tools to help them report that data for us. So exit entrance reasons, obviously, we, we need to tweak that. Vacancies, we need to know what happened to that vacancy. Was that something that you just didn't offer in your district? Did you fill it with someone who really wasn't very qualified to do that? So that's our next layer of looking at our data. And then licensure ideas, there are a number of licensure ideas, and I think we would say that this is one area that yes, we're going to recommend that Standards Board in this, the, the new committee, that's one of the first things that they can take a look at. Licenseur improvement is kind of a continuous improvement effort on our team. We're constantly saying, what if? And Scott and I have some interesting discussions where, you know, we, we talk it out. We have an actual set of regs that's in draft form that is a result of the Standards Board work and the Regulations Committee over the last year. So certainly, I think, we don't, we don't know how this will come out, whether everybody will end up saying, yes, comprehensive science is a great idea, or what that elementary restricted, if that goes through, what that might look at. But to, to start immediately working on the details of that, certainly, we would say that's important to have them work on that right away. Some unexpected animation here. Okay. Then we get into the areas that we probably played more of a supportive role than being able to take the lead. So certainly, again, the higher ed, our role in that is to support them in areas like, encourage them to develop innovative teacher prep programs, making sure that some of them implement that direct entry sped program that we've made possible now in our regulations, helping them with innovative ideas around student teacher roles, you know, those kinds of things. So that's how we will be supportive in them as they do improve data collection, deeper dives into the data that they collect and report to the federal government through Title II on pipeline data. And then lesser, the K-12, again, they're our partners. We, we don't have, we can't tell a district, normally you have to do this, but certainly we can help them in developing, for example, Grow Your Own, helping them coordinate with higher ed, make that relationship a little bit stronger. Again, we can encourage all K-12 to report vacancies and job positions through the KEAB. Encourage them to do creative contracts like job sharing. One of the recommendations that the Standards Board last week talked about is, we should be encouraging schools to have daycare available for their educators as a perk. So very interesting ideas. School realities, these are the recommendations around some of the legislative pieces such as, you know, retirement capers, which certainly, we can be very supportive of all of the recommendations, but, you know, politics is going to, and fiscal realities is going to dictate what happens eventually. So.
Those pesky realities.
I know. I'm going to turn it back over to Scott to get into the recommendations.
So Susan just said, we had a, an add-on, actually, a professional standards board meeting last week, you know, the board, you know, asked the standards board to take a look at it last month, and this is add-on meeting. It was not on the original schedule for the year for the people on the standards board, and I think all but three people were able to make it. I mean, this is a serious issue and they all take it very seriously. So we got together and Rudy basically walked through every single recommendation to seek input from the standards board, general support, areas might be, have some issues, and just general thoughts. So all in all, very positive support for the work that was completed. Standards Board, like Susan alluded to, we've been grappling with trying to figure out the best ways for people into the classroom for a long time. And so this is a, the standards board sees this as yet another way to bring a certain amount of attention to it. They very much are in favor of establishing the committee. They would like to see the committee as a subcommittee of the standards board, and I'll go into detail about some of the specifics of that here in a moment. Specific areas of support and/or endorsement, any of the initiatives that support awareness and respect for the profession, the standards board are in favor of those. Strengthening mentoring requirements and services because as we have, it's been mentioned already today, it's not so much a graining of the profession, but a greening, meaning people leave the profession after a few years. And one of the things that we think we know is, they report rather, when they do report, why they're leaving. It has to do with not feeling the support that they felt they might have needed. Then district efforts to provide supports and flexibility for educators. And Susan just talked about a variety of ideas came out from the original task force and then also from the standards board. What about daycare during the school day? What about job share type contracts? What if someone were, had a year-round contract or they shifted their contract instead of September to whatever, to shift it? Once again, beyond the scope of the work of the standard, of the KSDE or the State Board, but ideas that are floating out there amongst fellow professionals. Individual areas that the standards board had concern with that were on the actual recommendation list, elementary restricted as a whole, the individual voices weren't so concerned, but as a whole, the standards board was not in real support of that. There was an area in there where it talks about student teachers serving as the teacher of record. Standards Board is not in favor of that as well. Other ideas that came out from the standards board meeting to accentuate or to stress the Grow Your Own type approach, one of, you know, having spent nine years in western Kansas myself, wonderful part of the world, but the best chance to get person to, a teacher there is to grow your own from that hometown. And so if we can assist with those efforts, focus on the administrative preparation programs, continue to focus on that, though, to make, to ensure that we provide the supports for our teachers, or the younger ones and the ones who've been in the field longer. And then make sure we follow up with surveys to see about the preparation of the administrators. So the actual recommended actions are over the next two slides. The first one is to create the Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee. Some aspects of this would be, it would be a standing subcommittee of the professional standards board. The charge would be simply to continue the blue ribbon task force work, focus specifically on the data issues that we have, make sure it's more reliable and valid, and we analyze the data in such a manner that it leads us to some answers, Susan said. It's kind of hard to know what direction you're going if you don't really know what the issue is, and that comes from the data. We all think we know, but the data will out. This would be a nice subcommittee to delve into ideas to meet the challenges. So as people come up with the idea of what if we had this certain type of license, this would be a group who could unpack it. Then they would, after they've done their work, they'd report their findings and recommendations to the standards board. So that's the path. Then from there, the standards board would then mull it over and possibly bring it on to the state board, because the state board is who makes the actions. Who would be this committee? It'd be made up of 12 members. It'd be one individual from each one of your districts, the one person per district. Five groups would be represented. We'd want a community member and/or board member, school board member, that is, a teacher, building administrator, district administrator, and a higher ed individual. So there'd be two of each one of those people on this standing committee, make out 10. And then the commissioner would have the honor of appointing two at-large committee, two at-large members to the committee. So, and then this group would meet quarterly. And so they'd, like I said, dig in and look at the different ideas, and the train would then go to the standards board, standards board would do their, their thing, and then it would go from there, possibly on to the state board. That is a, that will be a formal recommendation to you. The second recommendation is to refer the entire blue ribbon task force report back to the standards board. And so as we have said a couple of times now, a broad recommendation of, hey, take this back and start looking at it, you know, more so, there's 61 recommendations in this thing. So go back and start digging in. And of course, we'd start with the subcommittee as well. And then the final is to direct, if you so chose to do so, direct the standards board to address some of the specific licensing ideas that came across, including elementary restricted license, the multi-year first license. Right now, our initial license is a one-year event, so as to take more advantage of the mentoring, make it a multiple-year experience. Student teaching options, we have a variety of pilot programs taking place right now with universities and locals on a placement of student teachers and what it kind of looks like. And then comprehensive science. So the idea being, take them back to the standards board to then science. So the idea being, take them back to the standards board to then see if they would then bring it back. Susan said, we don't know how it would come out. As I, earlier in the conversation or the presentation, I mentioned, the standards board as a whole was not in favor of the elementary restricted, restricted license. I would still recommend you kick it back to them though, and have them delve into it, because it, so there's no hint, I mean, it's all, it's very transparent, and we're looking at every and all ideas that might have a chance to help us with our, with our charge. So we took the opportunity to put together for you a recommended motion that basically captures those last three recommendations. This is not poetry, so you can, you can do with it as you will, but it enumerates the three recommendations of creating the subcommittee, sending the entire report back to the standards board, and then specifically looking at those individual licensing areas. That's it.
Well, thank you. Just a couple of procedural things before we get started. We will need a motion to accept the report. It does not mean that, that we are endorsing all items in the report, it just means we're basically saying, thank you, and that we're going to move forward with the report. Not exactly, we're not committing ourselves to any one item on the report, or, or accepting it, but the report, the, the committee did what we asked them to do. And, and that challenge is now before us. So that's all basically we're doing with the first one. So don't confuse that this is an action item that's going to, if you vote yes on this, we're accepting all of these and agree with them, because we don't, you know, and they haven't, as we just heard, there's more motions to come in terms of the direction and act, action of the committee and subcommittee. Or should I say the subcommittee will be forming. So the first motion, we go back to our original, the board action, it's moved that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the blue ribbon task force for teacher vacancies and supply.
So moved.
Moved by Sally Cobble, seconded by Dina Horst. All those in favor, please signify by, oh, wait, I don't, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Here, the way it's read, it says, accept the recommendations. So are we saying, we want to accept the report?
That would be my motion.
Okay.
So we're changing, let's go back, accept the report.
I'm not, not threatening, I accept the report.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second.
On accepting the report.
On accepting the report of the blue ribbon task force.
That would be my motion, is to accept the report.
That's what I thought was said.
Okay. All right.
I made the motion, and my motion was to accept the report.
Okay. All those in favor of, of accepting the report of the blue ribbon task force on teacher vacancies and supply, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Steve, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Yes. Nine zero of accepting the, of the report. Okay. The next item that we're going to be dealing with is the recommended motion that is before us, but we have, I think, some discussion that we want to have before we do that. And first thing I'm going to do is, Steve had a question for Randy and Ken. Steve Roberts' question is, what is the minimum matriculation at a college of education you would recommend for all teachers from English to welding?
Well, welding, I think would be more likely to be a program, at least here in Kansas at a technical college, but.
But if you were going to be a, a licensed teacher.
A teacher of welding.
A teacher of welding. And you went through a licensed program for the career in tech ed with your focus in, in welding. Obviously, the welding, we're not asking, what are those, I think Steve, and Steve, you can certainly correct me, is what are the commonalities of, of, of classes and experiences that you would expect of a, a teacher?
I think that unequivocally, for all 25 teacher preparation programs here in Kansas, the, the, those at the Regents universities, the rest at the, the private colleges and universities in Kansas, the program would consist of three components. There'd be some kind of general education component, something that all students of all majors would be expected to know, usually based in liberal arts and sciences. The second component would be deep content knowledge in the area that the, the teaching field, so to speak. And the third would be the pedagogy, the methods for teaching that content, making sure those, those methods are developmentally appropriate, because teaching a ninth grader and teaching a high school student or teaching a senior is different, teaching somebody, teaching a child with, who might, whose father might be a welder and has some background, might be a little bit different than teaching somebody who's never held a torch. And then the fourth, the fourth part would be clinical experience. More, the more opportunity to get that student out into a classroom teach, setting, to observe initially, and then to gradually have an opportunity, usually in some kind of co-teaching model, to participate in the running of the classroom, in the instruction of the classroom, in the assessing of the students, as we gradually begin that process of getting that, that, that student ready to be a, the teacher of record in, in her or his own classroom.
Thank you. Dina Horst?
My reason for being on there was for a motion, so you can, I don't have a question at this time.
Okay. Sally Cobble?
My question is about the motion that we're going to be looking at, your recommended motion. There's a few things on this report that I need to have happen sooner for my district rather than later. And this report, I mean, this motion doesn't talk about any timeline or anything. And so I don't know whether I ask you, whether I ask Jim, or I ask Randy, my question on these things that need to happen sooner than later for some of our districts, I don't particularly care if it's in the motion, but how do we, if this motion passes, do I need it in the motion, or will you guys just see that it becomes a priority?
Well, there's, with the start of school, you're happening right now.
Right.
Any recommendations that are going to be brought back to you will, won't go into effect until the earliest to be the fall of 17.
Yeah, but I would like them ready for schools to be able to use in next school year.
Okay.
And, and their, and we would need to have it through the system soon enough that schools can use it as a recruiting tool, too. I mean, knowing that this is going to happen in June or July doesn't help schools when they're looking for these vacancies if they're recruiting in May.
I would address that in, in, at two levels. First of all, yes, you could, you can certainly communicate to us and the committee, through Randy or I, to the committee, that what you want to see happen. But there are many things on this report that the districts don't have to wait for us, you know, so some of those might be, you know, this is, they see something, well, I hadn't thought of that, and they, there's no reason they can't go forward with their own efforts, and, not in spite of, but, you know, not wait for us.
Well, I don't want to hurry a process, but at the same time, we are behind the curve in the process for my district. And so I would like to, and I think the statistics showed that, that there's a few things that I would like to get the process rolling on and getting it going sooner than later.
As a district, as a state initiative, it might not move as quickly as you'd want, Sally, but at, at the district level, it certainly can, with support from the district, from the state, the Department of Education, you know, someone wanted to move.
You coming in the debate?
No, no. But very good questions. Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions, and this may go to Susan or Scott. The example used earlier, as far as welding's concerned, I mean, there's already a path for that through licensure, as with a number of career technical ed areas, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so there, there are options there, and folks can already.
Right.
Do that, and they, those folks can be in place in the schools.
Correct.
Quickly.
Through our CTE specialized and CTE, the technical certificates, there's that route, based on your occupational skills and expertise, and then there's also the route through completing an approved licensure program for technical education.
And my other question has to do with this elementary restricted possible option. And when you look at a restricted option, kind of explain that a little bit for folks, when that license, what does that and does that not allow?
What the restricted license does currently for the secondary are people with the degree in a given area, let's say business, they're able to enter into a restricted license program with an institution of higher ed, have a, have a job offer. And while teaching, actually entering the teaching field, they go for a two-year period with the institution of higher ed, picking up the classes, pedagogical classes of some philosophical classes. At the end of two-year period, they are granted a full professional license.
So it's a, it's a, basically a transition to teaching type program.
Correct.
And, but these are people who already have an undergraduate degree.
That's correct.
Actually, I would think that could potentially work with elementary. I think it'd be interesting to see, it might be a real innovative program that some higher ed institution might be interested in taking on. I think that, I mean, I have some concerns about it, but I think there's, I think there's some possibilities there that might be kind of intriguing, particularly, you know, you would never would have thought, but, that we have elementary vacancies, but we do. You know, and that might be an interesting transition to teaching type option that might possibly work. I, I actually'd like to see folks take a look at it, and maybe this committee could take a look at it and see what are some options out there. Thank you.
Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The specific issues, you know, like the elementary restricted and those, are we just limiting it to those things that the committee can discuss, or would there be an opportunity for them to open other areas?
Certainly, we'd open up to other areas.
Okay, because I didn't know whether that needed to be included, that other areas are, I don't know, I just thought, because there could be, I could see other opportunities for other areas to be considered, because I know we have vacancies in many other different fields. And the only other thing I wanted to say, and I think it's understood, and probably everyone said it, but I just want to repeat it. Over the years, we've worked hard on this board to remove barriers to licensure, which is extremely important while retaining high quality. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do, that comes back to us, we are ensuring that high quality is maintained. I'm confident it's understood, but I just wanted to say it. Thank you.
Kathy Bush?
Sorry about that. One more thing I forgot to include. And this has to go with the topic that we've already discussed. We talked about the greening versus the graining of the population, which I thought that data that you provided last month was really extremely enlightening. And so I, and I don't know if the teacher, well, I guess it does have to do with vacancy and supply, because it has to do with retention. But really looking at what do we do to help support mentoring and retention of those early year teachers? Because I think that's, the more of them we retain, the better. So I'd, I'd like to see that as a priority also. I'll try not to have forgotten.
You're welcome to come back at any time.
Forgotten in other ones.
That's okay, we're at that time.
Thank you.
Well, not to add my list, Ken, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name. Ken Willard?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, my speaking engagement or application form is still not working. When, is it, are you ready for a motion or not?
I, just a little bit more.
All right.
If we could. Okay, thank you.
I have a motion to.
Okay, thank you. I will, I've got a couple of items. First of all, on the teacher vacancy and supply committee, I don't know how the rest of the board feels on this, and they can certainly look at this, but not to add weight to the committee, but I, I think it would behoove us to have a state board member on that committee. And if we did have someone, I, I'd like to impose that duty, responsibility, and task to Kathy Bush with the board's approval. She's been working with WSU and, and the teacher ed, teacher prep program and.
Has been.
Has been. We want to focus to has been. And, and, and this, she can bring that recent knowledge. That seems to have stopped, but, yeah, to that, I, I think it would be good we did that. Okay. My second issue is, I thought, we have, on your recommended actions, to refer, you know, the, the report back, the task force report back to the professional standards board for examination. That's kind of ambiguous. I mean, examine it why? Well, that was cool, you know, let's do that again. You know, what, what do we expect from them on this? Because your clarity then comes down here on areas that are probably the most contentious recommendations you have, you know. And we have, you know, some 61 recommendations, and we're going to put our time, effort, and energy into the four that seem to be leading, it's not the low-hanging fruit, you know, on this report. So I'm just wondering why we said, okay, we're just going to get a general examination of the report itself, and then down here, we're going to dig in, it sounds like to me, to these four, when these four, I don't see as changing much of the, of the landscape, you know, in, in terms of where we are. But even more importantly is, why those four, when they're the most contentious?
The word was, the word was just chosen because there's 61 recommendations of, you know.
They just happened to pick the hardest ones, you know, let's pick the hard ones.
It's meaningful work.
Well, without a doubt.
Yeah.
But I, I just don't want to get bogged down where a committee's become, in, in, they just get bogged down in, in the hardest part of their, rather than dealing with, you know, some of the things they can be supportive, they can provide leadership, they can provide, you know, direction on some of the other reports. I just don't want to get bogged down, and, and we're going to meet quarterly, well, that's not very much, when you're, when there's a sense of urgency. I would imagine there's going to be something else going on behind the scenes in each one, but say this committee broke into four groups and they met quarterly, you know, this is going to take up a lot of your time. You know, not that I don't want to address these, but I'm just wondering why we picked those four categories.
I think one answer to that is, there's a regulations committee that's a subcommittee of standards board already, and they've been delving into some additional licensure proposals, regulation proposals around licensure. So this would be a natural fit to get them, have the standards board direct them to start looking into some of the details, too, so that you're approaching it from multiple angles. So it doesn't have to wait until the, the new standing committee, but it would be the regs that usually is the one who delves into details and says, here's one option, here's one option, here's what that would look like. Does that help?
Kinda.
Okay.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of throwing out a cautionary example there of, of committees working. You know, you're going to all meet four times a year, and you're going to take on the toughest tasks, we could lose some of the other initiatives on there. You know, I mean, not that we shouldn't delve and, and take on difficult tasks, don't get me wrong, but I'd look at committees and how they're structured, do they have the capacity to do what we're asking them to do? You know, is one of the questions we always have to ask, you know, in terms of numbers, and time, and circumstances of, of, of a benefit to the field, you know, to do this. I'd also, I'm concerned that the words address and examination are just too vague. You know, do we want something from them? You know, not that we can't, I can't live with those, but I just want to create a sense of urgency that I don't want to just look at this and have a rehash of, wasn't that a great report? Now we can write it in a different way and give it back to the board, and there's no action. I, I want action. Okay? You know, I, I, I don't want to sound like a whiner in this, but, you know, the next thing, your, your report back to us, you know. back to us, you know, I would hope that after each meeting, there would be a report back, you know, to the board on what was accomplished, what's your status, even if it's, you know, well, we kind of got bogged down, but we're working on it, you know? I just need an accurate status report. And the thing I'm going to recommend too, I would hope that, I wouldn't be part of the motion, is to come back to the idea that as a board, we need in probably, in the very near future, and we're being aggressive about this as well, Randy, is the opportunity as a board to have a retreat and delve more deeply into the 61 recommendations and have the board members or, you know, committee members come and others, as we do with the other topics that we deal with, and have a more relaxed or free-flowing conversation about the, about this whole teacher vacancy and supply. You know, as the board has said, we're not ready to vote, you know, on every 61 and say, this is where we want to go. We're very supportive of what you've provided us, but we're also cognizant that some of these are doable, some of them are not, some of them are our responsibility. Yes, we've gone through the whole presentation today, you know? So that said, I want to, Jim Porter has, is next. Jim? Thank you. Sally Cobble?
Well, Jim, some of the things that you were saying is what I was trying to say. I'm glad they pulled out these four to send to the Professional Standards Board. Those are probably the four I hear more than anything and could help my districts more than anything. And I realize they only meet four times a year, and that was my concern on timing when I was coming, when I was asking about the timing, if we could have those discussions and get them solved. And so I will give my time to, if you don't mind, Chairman, to Ken Willard, who I think has a motion.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been just waiting with bated breath to help you with your concerns, with the motion that I have prepared.
Thank you.
I will just say that, first of all, that the motion as it stands, in my mind, grants more latitude to the Professional Standards Board, at least implies it than what that was, I'm comfortable with. So, and I'm more, much more interested in the effect and the import of the changes that we make, rather than the speed with which we make them. So I would change the recommended motion to eliminate the word examination and replace it with evaluation. And then in the last sentence, I would recommend removing the word address, replacing it with study and present a range of options to the State Board for addressing the rest of the sentence.
Okay, I'm looking for the word.
Lastly, I move to direct the Professional Standards Board to strike address.
And evaluation.
Strike examination, replace it with evaluation, strike address with the wording that I provided, and I can provide that again.
If you would, please.
Study and present a range of options to the State Board for addressing the.
Okay. That's seconded by Jim Porter.
Mr. Chairman, the reason for that last statement is that, while I appreciate the work on the report very much, one of the presenters, when asked about the comprehensive science matter, gave an example of a small district in Western Kansas, for example, that can't find a good teacher, so we do this. And that is not what I want to hear as an option. There has to be, has to be more than one way to address that situation in the age of communication in which we live. And so I think there are other things that need to be considered. I don't, I'm not ready to list them, but I think the Professional Standards Board should be able to evaluate and present some options for us to consider.
Very good. Thank you. Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does the motion as it stands limit the evaluation of these to those issues? Those four? Is that, I mean, I'm reading it, that's, it just limits to those four? Or am I misreading it? I don't, you know?
Ken?
My response to that would be is that specific part of the motion only addresses those licensing issues.
Those four licensing issues.
That's right.
I would like the opportunity to address those first, but maybe allow others to be opened up, I guess, is my concern. And I don't.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know. I don't know that they're already closed. This motion directly addresses those issues, and that's the reason for the modification I'm requesting.
That's why I'm asking if it's.
Somebody else can speak to the rest of the.
I don't know.
I like the idea of studying and presenting back to us, instead of the word address. It's more specific.
No, I like that part also, but I just don't, I'm just wondering if this is limiting it to those four, because I would think those four should be priorities, but.
I don't, I don't see it that way.
You don't?
No.
Okay, okay.
The statement above it is an evaluation, and we've written recommendations about reporting back. Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That actually was my question, and I still don't think I'm clear. Are they just focusing on those four areas? Because if they are, I can't support that. I think they need to be able to focus on more things out of the report.
I, I take the first part as they're looking at the entire 61.
Okay.
Okay? But we're asking them to also act specifically on these four areas. Other areas, as I've said before, could, can be addressed, you know, but also there are things that in the 61, or in this case, 57, can be, can be done even by the districts. They don't have to wait for us, you know? So, but these are specific things that we would be required to take action on, you know, at some point in some way, you know? So that's the differentiation, as I see it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Peggy, do you have those changes? Want to read that back to us, so we make sure that we're all voting on the same thing?
Motion by Ken Willard would be, I move to create the Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee, a standing subcommittee of the Professional Standards Board. Further, I move to refer the Blue Ribbon Task Force Report to the Professional Standards Board for evaluation. Lastly, I move to direct the Professional Standards Board to study and present a range of options to the State Board for addressing the specific licensing issues mentioned in the Blue Ribbon Task Force Report, colon, elementary restricted, multi-year first license, study teaching, student teaching options, and comprehensive science.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is that right?
All right. We'll vote on the issue then. Those in favor of the motion as just read, please signify by raising your right hand. Steve, how do you vote? Steve votes yes. Those opposed, same sign. Nine zero. Thank you very much, and thank you all. The committee, KSDE, thank you all for your efforts on behalf of this very challenging and hopefully soon-to-be-resolved issue. I doubt it, but we'll keep going. Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a break here, and we'll be back. Thank you all for coming up. There you go. We'll be back in session at 3:00. Thank you. Not telling you anything you don't know, but I'm just affirming what you do know. Okay. Somebody tell me why I have Social Studies people in front of me and this is English Language Arts. He's early? Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. He's pretty early. He's, he's. Okay. Yes, I see that. I'm trying to see why I was getting these things. Don likes to confuse me. What? 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 What's that? No. Janet Waugh? Unless you have a note? That's fine. We can, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We've got a quorum. The next item on our agenda is to update on math and English Language Arts standards in review, and we're looking at the adoption process. We have with us Janet Novo for an overview, Melissa Fast in math, and Susie Myers in ELA, English Language Arts.
Yes. Good afternoon. Chair, Madam, Co-Chair, Missioner, and Board Member. My name is Janet Novo, and I'm the Director of the Career Standards and Assessment Services Team, for those of you who don't not know me. And I just wanted, before I bring up Melissa and Susie, I wanted to just give you a quick update on the standards, because not only ELA or science or math are the only standards that we end up reviewing, we have both assessed standards, which is English Language Arts, mathematics, history, government, science, and of course, English Language Proficiency standards. But we also have what we call model standards, and I'm not going to read off the list because you have those in front of you, but we do a lot of reviews of standards throughout the years. By legislature, we have to review those every seven years, and so we have a timeline for which we do that. And then they come to you for either adoption or approval, those standards do throughout the years. This year, within the next 16, 17 year, we have about eight standards that will be coming to you at one point or another. Not all of them will you be having updates on. We try to bring up your updates to those that are probably the most controversial. So we do have some dance, driver's ed, English Language Arts, health, library media, mathematics, physical education, and world language standards that are coming up for review this year. And the timeframe there, I don't have a specific month. I have more or less a season when they're going to be coming to you this year, and most of them will be towards the end of this coming school year. These are the links, if you have the PowerPoint, so you have the links that you can go into our standards page, as well as the timeline. This one here is the timeline, and I'll give you all the standards with the exact timeline, when they were reviewed last, when they're up for adoption or review again coming to you. I wanted to be able to provide you a list of those contact folks, our standards consultants, who work with the standards in each of the areas, and those that are listed in dark and sort of in italics, I've done that because those individuals are really in another team. We have Tammy Mitchell and Julie Ewing that are with the EXSET team, the Early Childhood Special Education team, and then we have Mark Thompson, who does our health and physical education, and they're in the center, the nutrition team. At one time, all of these standards were in Career Standards and Assessment Services Team, but I'd have to give, go back to, way back when they were there. With time, they just moved along. So with that, what I'd like to be able to do is present to you two new staff members. You had heard quite a bit before from Mark, from Matt Crable, thank you. You see, they leave, you forget their name. Matt Crable, he was our science consultant, and during the time when we were doing the NGSS standards, he was up here, you know, presenting all the time for you. So I want you to know who replaced them, because at some point, new science standards will be up for review again. And so we have Lizette Burst with us. And then we also have hired another math consultant as well, and you'll be seeing her more often as well. And we have Sarah Schaefer with us. So with that, I'm going to leave you, Susie Myers, who will be reviewing the English Language Arts. Thank you.
Hello, I am Susie Myers. I'm the English Language Arts and Literacy Consultant for Career Standards and Assessment. Our review process actually began in early May. We met actually a little bit before that it began. We sent out a Dropbox link with a series of resources on it, and I'll share with you what those resources were in a moment. But our first in-person meeting was May 3rd and 4th. Our committee is divided into two work groups, a writing work group and a review work group. And so the first in-person meeting was just with the writing work group. And we met for two days and talked through the resources that were provided for the group and made some decisions about how they wanted to move forward. We did not finish all of the work that they wanted to complete in those two days, and so we had a follow-up meeting, June 1st and 2nd, to complete that initial draft, because we wanted it to be ready to present at the Impact Institutes in the summer and get some feedback from teachers out in the field about what we were working on. So the initial draft was posted for the review work group. All of the review work group's work has been occurring electronically, virtually. So they were provided links to the standards that they're assigned to review, and we created a Google form for them to put their feedback about the standards that they were responsible for reviewing in that Google form for us to look back on later. Those, that first draft was presented at the Emporia Impact Institute on June 14th and on July 7th at the Hays Impact Institute by members of the writing work group. They had a different Google form that they shared, a very condensed version, just for feedback from the teachers to comment on the work that they had, that they had done. So we have that feedback as well from the Impact Institute. On Friday, the review work group will complete the, their review of the first draft. Then I will look through all of that feedback and convene a virtual meeting with the review work group to discuss the changes that we're going to make. We will plan to share whatever that group, whatever comes out of that virtual meeting, we will plan to share that second draft at the KSDE Annual Conference, and again, gather feedback from those in attendance at those sessions. And then in January and February of next year, we plan to share that second draft at four regional meetings and get feedback from not only the field, but hopefully, community members, parents, people who might have some good ideas about where we're going and where we need to go. And then finally, in March, we will convene the full committees, so both the writing and the review work group in person, to develop the third and maybe final draft of the Language Arts standards. April 2017, we should be ready to present you the final draft of the Language Arts standards, and then May or June of 2017, be ready to get those approved. So just to summarize, we are progressing in accordance with the timeline that we established, that we laid out, and we are on target to present that final draft to you all in April for approval in May or June of next year. Obviously, I'm not going to read all these names to you, but just so that you can get a sense of how the committees, how the two work groups are put together, these are the names of the people who are serving on those committees. We also have an ad hoc, a group of ad hoc members. They were able to choose whether they would be on the. They were able to choose whether they would be on the review or the, or the writing work group. And some of them will be attending both, and that's fine. I wanted to include this just so that you could get a sense of who the representatives were from your districts in case you had questions and wanted to pose those questions to those people. The green asterisks indicate the chair people. So Kim Osanga is the chairperson of the writing work group, and Brent Wolfe is the chairperson of the review work group. Those people have actually been running the meetings. I consult with them about ideas for how the meeting should go, but they are the ones who are responsible for running the meeting and organizing the people and keeping the work moving forward. This is what I referred to initially, the list of documents that were provided to the full committee to review initially. Some of these were at the request of the commissioner, including the standards from other states, states that did not adopt Common Core ACT College and Career Readiness standards. And you can see, they had a wealth of information to look over. The way that we used this in the initial in-person meeting was, we organized some structured review time for people to get together and sort of pull from these resources, the good ideas or the very valuable information that they wanted to bring to the attention of the full group and consider either including in some way in our standards or consider structurally if we were going to change the way that our standards looked to be more user-friendly for teachers. So that's how they were used, and they continue to be available to the full committee through our Dropbox. So again, this is just the first draft, and I wanted to give to you a summary of the work that's occurred up to this point. Again, the review committee is not quite finished with their review of this first draft, so this could change. But as of the conclusion of the, of the writing work group, this is, this is where we are right now. The group thought it was important to include learning progressions for all standards. In other words, have it very available to teachers so that they could see what the student is doing the year before and the year after, in addition to what the student is, what the expectation for the student is in that grade level for each standard. They wanted to include what they're calling student success statements. In other words, they felt like it was sometimes unclear what a certain standard was asking students to do exactly, and unclear to teachers what success would look like in that particular standard. So the teachers worked together to, they actually established a subcommittee of the writing committee to work on these student success statements to include in the, in the standards. So they wished to maintain the appendices from the 2010 standards. There are three appendices included in the Language Arts standards to provide the research background, some additional information, for example, about text complexity and sort of all the meaning behind that and research that goes into that. And the committee thought that those were important to maintain in our, in our new standards as well. They wanted to maintain all of the wording of the 2010 standards, so they were not interested in changing a lot of the, any of the wording of the 2010 standards or our current ELA standards. And then they wanted to make sure that we compose a new set or draft of front matter that would include references and connections to other resources and especially to other content areas, because our current standards include literacy standards for science and technical subjects as well as social studies. And they think it's really important that we continue that discussion about cross-curricular literacy and how, how we can integrate content areas. And so they thought that front matter could include some links or ideas for how we can continue to do that. If you want more information about that, we have been posting, I've been posting and updating about this process on the ELA Standards Review site. So you can link to it there. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Hi, I am Melissa Fast. I'm one of the math consultants. Now that Sarah has joined on board, and a lot of what I'm going to say will mirror what Susie did. Our process is very similar, so hopefully, we can get through this relatively quickly. Our timeline is a little bit different for mathematics, just simply because the timing of when everybody could get together. But we met March 23rd for a virtual meeting, the full committee. We are subdivided into a writing and a review committee as well. And we had a virtual meeting to sort of set the tone for how the process was going to take place in March. And in May, we also had a two-day work group meeting for the writing committee to start diving into the math standards. Similarly to the ELA standards, they weren't able to complete their work. And so we had to find another three days they felt that they needed for mathematics. And because of everybody's schedule in the summer, we weren't able to do that until July 25th. So we're a little bit behind Susie and them in terms of where we're at. But in, in July, we did meet, and the writing committee was able to wrap up sort of their first draft of the standards. And I now have those in my hands where I'm kind of cleaning up some of the editing. They went through, and we tracked all of our changes from like bolds to underlines. And so I'm going to clean that up a little bit and hand it off to the review committee. And then in August and September, the second draft will be developed by the review committee. They're going to discuss and make changes to what the writing committee did as well. Like with ELA, the intention is that this group will meet virtually. However, there's been some discussion as to whether or not that will be the direction they go, simply because of the changes that have been recommended that I'll get into here in a little bit. But as of right now, the, the plan is to meet virtually and discuss those changes in a similar fashion to what ELA is doing. And then in October, share the second draft with the field at the annual conference. Because of the timing of when our meetings were scheduled, we weren't able to share where we were at, at the Impact Institutes because they hadn't finished their work. So we have yet to send out any, anything to the field for feedback. So October will be our first opportunity to do that. And then like, like Susie, again, in January and February, we're hoping to share the second draft at the four regional meetings and gather feedback through a Google form. And then in March, the third draft will be developed, hopefully, third and final, which will be presented to you all in April. And then in May and June, hopefully, have you guys present to this, hopefully have you guys, will present to you, the, the board members. We're proceeding along the established timeline. I would say we're probably a hair behind just because of the timing of the in-person meetings and the fact that they needed three additional dates. But I still anticipate us to be on target for you guys to receive the final draft in April of 2017 at this time. If something happens along the way, like the review committee anticipates needing to meet in person, we'll be sure to update you if, if those might be pushed back. But as of right now, we're still on target for the April 2017 deadline. Like Susie, we subdivided the groups. You can see the writing and the review committee. I think we have a few more individuals on the committee. As we had the committee created, then Randy came to me and said, can we add some more people? Can we do this? And absolutely, the more, the merrier. So it might appear as though we have a couple of extra people here or there. But generally speaking, I think we have a similar numbers. My chairs are represented in bold. Debbie Thompson is the chair of the writing committee. And Chris Carter is the chair of the review committee. I did not do like Susie did and go through and break it down by district, but I'll share you with you the website later on. And if you go on that website, you can see all of that information next to each individual's name in terms of what, what, what district each of these folks are from. Our ad hoc committee member list is significantly larger. We, again, we had a group similar to Susie's size, and then at recommendations from some of you guys, actually, and also from Randy, we went and added some additional folks from business and industry, CETE, community colleges, as well as some, some more parent representatives on there. So you can kind of see what area each of those people represent. They will be invited to all writing and review committee meetings. And some of them have attended the virtual meetings, some came to the writing committee, some plan to attend both, some just a few of them. But that's, those are their list of names there. Again, like Susie, we had a list of documents that were recommended and some that we recommended to them to start looking through, the ACT, the SAT standards, the mathematical learning progressions, which talk like Susie described in terms of the order in which a student would, the research shows best learn mathematics. So if I was teaching third grade, what's taking place in second and what's going to take place in fourth grade? And, and how is that connected to what's taking place in high school? So those are, those are important documents, as well as the RHO standards and the Real Mass standards as well. We looked at all of those documents and continue to do so throughout the process. All of these documents are available on a Google Drive, similar to what Susie used with her Dropbox. Here are a few changes. These are what was current prior to our July meeting. We had to turn in our, our item to you guys before we had met. But basically, the, in the front matter of the math standards, we have our 15% that we adopted back in 2010. Some of those were like patterns and modeling. Those are all going to be embedded within the appropriate grade levels so that districts know what grade levels those need to take place in. My emails get bombarded with, well, when are we supposed to do this? So it just made logical sense to put those into the grade levels, the committee thought. They want to maintain the current language of domain cluster and standard. We're just now starting to get folks to understand that language. And so they felt to make changes might cause unneeded confusion on the parts of teachers in the field and, and parents as we, as we move forward. They want to maintain the current standards for math practices, those eight standards that are repeated through all the grades. They really felt those were valuable and connected very much in line with what your Board of Education goals are and the feedback that Randy and Brad received on their tour. So they wanted to keep those intact. There are some shifting of some standards from grade levels based on feedback from the field, based on research, and just kind of what makes sense. I could give you one example. Angles takes place in fourth grade right now, and then it's not touched on again until sixth grade. It seemed kind of disconnected. And so in their opinion, they're moving it up closer to the grade in which it would be connected to the other material. Unlike in years past, prior to 2010, where standards were repeated over and over and over again, for mathematics now, it happens and you move on. And so if you have a two-year break between two standards, it's going to be, increase the chances of a student maybe not recalling that information. So there are some standards that are shifting from grade band. And like ELA, again, we're going to, they are wanting to include learning progressions for all standards and how they're connected, to really make it feel like the student feels like everything that they're doing from one grade to the next is connected. So those are taking place. I have another page of proposed changes here. For high school, I would say right now, looking at what they have done, high school looks the most different. And if, I'll just refresh your memory a little bit, the high school standards currently are sort of structured by content. So you have a chunk of geometry, algebra, and that sort of stuff. And they felt it was important to identify grade levels within these standards to help, help, I guess, in terms of the assessment process, but also in terms of instructional practice, in terms of which of these standards are more 9, 10 type standards, which are 11 standards, and then again, the plus standards, which would be for the 12th grade students that would be taking that fourth year of math. And so they're going through and identifying grade levels and identifying standards for which they felt would be more for the fourth year math course as opposed to trying to cram them in. One of the biggest complaints that I received from high school teachers is there's just too much. There's way too much to get it in. And so I guess clarifying to them what we felt was more essential in 9, 10, and 11th grade, and then what would happen in that fourth year math course. Clarification of language, making sure that the reworking of examples that are provided. In the math standards, it'll say, a student needs to do this or whatever, and then it says, for example. And unfortunately, teachers think that, for example, is the only way in which a student should be able to do it. And that's not at all what we were trying to get across. And so they're reworking the examples that are provided and making it more clear that these are just examples, that there are many, many ways in which to skin the cat, so to speak. And so they're really, they spent a lot of time working on those. And embedding resources within the document. So if it's, if it's talking about how to work on adding fractions, giving them links to documents that will help them, help students understand how to do them through the learning progressions and things such as that. And then the front matter, like with Susie, they're going to include references and connections to additional resources and other content areas as well, especially in the science and engineering and math fields and making STEM feel a little more important. They're also wanting to, sometimes they believe that it's difficult for people to connect mathematics to the social emotional character standards and to the other areas, just because math, everybody feels like this foreign concept. And so they really want to make sure to include that information in the front matter so that they understand that, that, that it is part of what we do and, and the math practices are very intimately connected to that. So that was also going to be included in the front matter. And then otherwise, I think it's just trying to make the standards make more sense to teachers and also more sense to just the layperson who would look at them. Obviously, if you don't understand the math, you don't understand the math, but you need to at least understand the language it's written in so that it doesn't feel like it's a foreign language as well as mathematics involved. So those are some proposed changes that are going on. We too have a website, like Susie. If you go to that website, like I said, you'll be able to see each of the committee members. And it also says a little bit about the committee members, sort of how many years in education they've had, what their area of emphasis is, and, and that sort of stuff, as well as the district that they represent. And otherwise, I think that's where we are. Questions or comments from you guys?
Well, I'll start it off. First of all, thank you very much for giving us this information about the organization and the progress you've made so far. Seems like we're on a good passage here, you know. I would ask Randy, what is the deadline that we have to have? I mean, they've given us a, a target, you know, in 2017, April or May, we'll be voting on it. What, what do you see as us voting finally on the, the ELA and math standards?
It'd be the summer of 2017.
In the summer of 2017. But, but we have to have it done by December.
Yes.
Okay. I, I just want to make that clear because I don't want you to feel like, oh my God, we got to get this done by April. And if we're not done by April, we failed. This is not a math test that's 20 minutes long. Okay, you-
We don't give those kind of tests anymore.
Thank you very much. You know, but I just want to make that clear, rather be, have great standards than meet an arbitrary timeline. Sally Cobble?
I have a question for math and one for language arts. When you reorganized high school into, you know, your different levels, do you think that will throw off any of these kids that go early into technical ed type? Was that taken into consideration with the pathways?
Absolutely. Martin Coleman, who's one of our CTE consultants here at the agency, he was on the high school committee. And there was lots of debate and conversation about each of the standards. And, and the math teachers in the room consulted him with, you know, what, what impact will this potentially have on the CTE students? And they made sure to take that into account as they were going through this process as well.
Okay, thank you. And language arts. I was curious and interested when in one of your suggestions is that they define success. Because one of the things that a lot of people liked about the standards was the student, the teacher got to determine the success rather than the system determining the success. So I found that interesting. But I had a, a gal that's going into teacher reading for the first time in many years, veteran teacher. What's an anchor chart?
Well, I was a high school teacher, and we didn't really use those. So I-
You don't know either. Is that, is, is an anchor chart something that's used by individual districts and it's district thing? It's not a-
Well, I think it's just something that a teacher can put up, having to do with a standard or some kind of instructional thing. So we didn't, we didn't use them in either district that I was, that I was in.
It really doesn't, I just can't explain to the people what they are.
It's something that is used primarily in the elementary school classroom, and it's to help anchor learning, so to speak, so-
Now, I'm an elementary teacher. Does it go back to anything we used to do? Does it have an old term?
I'm not sure that I have enough institutional knowledge to say that, but I would not say that that's a state level thing, that's something that-
It's an individual-
Individual buildings.
So it's not part of the standards? It's a tool that a teacher uses?
Yes, a tool is the best way to describe it. Something- Yes, a tool is the best way to describe it. Something that's part of maybe a curriculum that a school has chosen to adopt.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation and all the hard work you've done. Thank you.
Yeah.
Another question I have for both of you is, are these Kansas standards?
Unequivocally, yes.
Yes.
That's a big word, unequivocally.
That's why I used it. To show that math teachers do have a vocabulary.
Sounds like a math issue, you know.
That's right, absolutely. We're integrating.
So I'll be the pain in the neck and just say, I kind of heard in your statement, you're keeping a lot of the same wording from the 2010 standards. So what's the difference?
Yeah. We really pushed our committee, I pushed several times through the conversation at that initial in-person meeting and asked them, so you're sure? What about the, you know, and kind of brought the conversation back to, what about these do we need to change? Let's look at the feedback. We had survey feedback. We had, we had all of that. And they were adamant that the only thing that they really thought was a weakness in our current standards was a lack of clarity for classroom teachers. And what they, what they kept calling, they're not user friendly. And from the conversation, I determined that what they meant by not user friendly was that the teachers were having a hard time figuring out what they looked like in practice. And so that was really the focus of their work. They were happy with what the standards were asking teachers to do and thought they were thorough and good. They just wanted to provide extra guidance to teachers.
So from the math, maybe I should have explained this a little bit more. It was a little more fine tooth, I mean magnifying glass. The subgroups each had their own working document of the current standards and based on their grade brands. We had an elementary group, a middle school group and a high school group. And they literally started from word one of, the standard one within their grade band and read through each one of them. And when the, when everything comes out, you'll get to see exactly everything that was changed, from every the that was changed to every misspelled word that was corrected. And there was a lot of wordsmithing in terms of changing of vocabulary, in terms of making it seem more clear. And there were additional standards added at the math layer area where they went through and they thought that the standard was written in a, in a big way, meaning it covered too much. And so rather than keeping just one big standard, they might have deleted that bigger standard and written two smaller standards that made it more user friendly for teachers to understand what that would look like in the classroom. Made a lot of, they connected it to learning progressions and inserted more graphics, pictures of what it would look like in a math, like what does this look like? What does this entail? And that sort of thing. So I think that while the general content of the standards themselves remains pretty much intact from 2010, from the math standpoint, there was a lot more changes that were made. There were some standards that were completely deleted, just because they didn't felt that it was there. From the high school standpoint, Sally, just kind of add on to that, the plus standards currently represent standards that would be taught, you know, beyond the third year of math. And there's not a lot of them. This go around, they've added a lot more of them. And the reason being, they want the, the feedback from research and the feedback from post-secondary people that were involved in the committee is they really need to make sure that those standards that are below some of those content areas, the math, or the geometry and the algebra one and algebra two standards are given adequate time. Whereas if there was, you know, 100 standards to cover, you're only going to have a little bit of time to get through them. And so they did identify more of those standards as plus. But they're making it very clear that their belief as a committee, and one of the committee members was actually like, how do we go about doing this? They believe four years of math should be required in high school. Just, they, and that's because they're math teachers and absolutely. And so, but I kept honing them in on the fact that it's not a requirement for high school. It's only three years. And so they needed to look at it through that lens regardless of what they want. I mean, every content area would like for everything to be required. So they did. So there was, Jim, quite a bit of changes made to that, but that's, generally speaking, I think the standards stayed intact.
Well, to that, to that theme, yes.
Well, as you identify that and you make that more teacher friendly, do you think this will help them in selecting curriculum that won't go home to these parents that are crazy?
Or won't drive them crazy.
Or won't drive the parents crazy? I mean, we've had some schools choose poorly on their curriculum. Okay. Will this help them choose curriculum better, make better choices?
I think that the clarity of the standards will help teachers understand what's expected of students better and thus hopefully help them as they're looking at curriculum. One of the things that I always share with any district that contacts me is right now, there's, there's not curriculum out there that's 100% aligned to anything that's out there. And so to be a good educator, you need to be able to supplement and go out and pick and choose, beg and borrow and steal, so to speak. And so I think that the clarity will help the teachers be able to recognize what's good and aligned better than maybe to the bandwagon of adopting certain types of curriculum. The high school's going to be the hardest one to struggle with, just simply because most of the curriculum that's out there is grouped by, you know, algebra one, algebra two, geometry. And so one of the things that we talked about a lot is making it very clear to them that they may have to, as an algebra one teacher, go to their geometry book and use some of that information in their algebra one class to kind of keep up with the course of action. So I think it will help in an indirect way. There's not any information that says this is good and this is not because it is a local control state.
Tina Horst?
Thank you. Well, this is a similar question to Sally's, but I hear a lot from parents, grandparents, which I'm sure you have too, that kids are bringing home homework that they can't help the kids with. So is there any attempt to encourage teachers to provide a better communication stream with, with parents, grandparents, community members in regard to, and I hear it more with math than I do with, with language arts, but both of you could answer that. I hear it about books, types of books that they think are being recommended and through, and really it was through Common Core. But I'm, I'm thinking about our communication with the public.
Right. I can, I can talk about a couple of things for language arts. One, the committee, and now that I think about it, I don't think this was on my slides, but the, the committee developed what they called gist statements. And I don't know if they're going to formally be called that, but just for the purposes of working, within the work, they were calling them gist statements, which really were just statements about what's the point of this standard, so that people weren't really losing the forest for the trees. And those are statements that parents could easily understand if they're looking at an assignment or something that a child has brought home, to really understand the point and the reason why the child was doing it. Probably more to your point is that we currently do have parent resources available on both of our websites for math and language arts that are written in parent-friendly terms, simple documents in both English and Spanish that explain what children are or should be doing at each grade level according to the standards, our current standards. And I would assume that part of our process, once we have an adopted set of standards, would be to develop similar materials to what we have currently.
And if I might, if I might comment on that, I don't know whether very many parents are aware that that exists. So communication, we need to communicate better with, with the community and that's part of our job too. So
I'm sorry. One of the things within our document, the, I mentioned that the standards, they're wanting to connect resources within the document. There's going to be links to the parent guides that will be modified. The current ones are for our current standards. So we will have to make some modifications to them once the new standards are adopted. But there'll be connections made for those. But when we go around to those regional meetings in the beginning of the school year, we'll be asking parents for feedback, but also be encouraging districts to link their parents, put it on their websites. And when they have informational nights, to let the parents know about these resources that are available. I know that we have a lot of concerns from math. I mean, there's, because of all the stuff on Facebook and the people taking things out of, you know, out of context and things like that. And so I know that there is awareness in the committee. It's definitely one of the items on their list of things to do once we get the standards out. But right now, the focus is really on getting the standards where they want them. And then all the supplemental resources afterwards, we'll continue to work on both in math and ELA.
I just want to make one statement. The standards are really for the schools or teachers to, so that they know what students should know and be able to do, how the instruction takes place. As a State Department of Education, we don't dictate that. That's a local decision. And so the curriculum, a lot of times that schools choose dictates, and sometimes textbooks kind of dictate how to teach them of that. So I think you're absolutely right. We need to provide a little bit more education to parents and increase that awareness, whether that be through our media department or us doing things regionally. It's definitely something that we have noticed quite a bit and we need to target them.
Janet, before we go to you, Ken Willard headed, was recognized before that. Ken Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little bit concerned about the commitment to not changing the language this early in the process that you mentioned in the ELA standards. I think I understood it differently in the math standards and your wording there. But, and I say that because I'm sure you're aware of the political cloud that hovers over you and particularly over us as we go about this work. And while much of the opposition over Common Core had little to do or anything to do with what the standards actually said, nevertheless, they're real and create a lot of issues for us. So I'm wondering, first of all, if that commitment to not changing the language is premature and ought to be reconsidered. And I'm also wondering if there is any attention that has been paid to in identifying or, I guess, identifying ways in which that we can clearly say that these are Kansas standards, not the Common Core standards. They're either a step around them, over them, back, behind, back from them or whatever. So we can do the best that we can to eliminate that. We're going to have to be very diligent about it or we're going to be in the same predicament that we've been in for the last several years.
Well, I think one easy way to address that is for the standards to look very different. And they will look very different just because of the things that the teachers are adding to them and, and thinking about the ways that they're planning to present them. Yeah.
Just that statement. So how does that comport with not changing the language? I don't understand that.
I guess I'm not, I'm not
Well, we have to
The actual standard, but the, the way that the document looks right now, the standard is a very small portion of the document. And say, right now, as the, as the document is in draft one, and I'll reiterate that, that this is draft one. So I have not yet looked at, because the review committee, their work isn't finished until this Friday. And when I look, when I pull that up, they might have all kinds of suggestions for changes. So I'll just say outright that there isn't necessarily a, I don't know what I just did, commitment to not change the standards. I wouldn't say that there's a commitment on the, on the part of the committee to not change the standards. It's just that the conversation at the initial in-person meeting for the writing work group did not go in that direction. It was asked by the chairperson several times. I mean, we tried to, tried to say, are you sure? Let's look at this. Let's look at these. Let's look at the Virginia standards. Let's look at Oklahoma. Let's look, let's look at all of these. And there was no, there was no desire on the part of the committee to do that. And we also had legislative representation too, who stood up and said, I don't understand what people are making such a big deal about with these. These are, these are vanilla, was his statement. But I'll go back to my, go back to my visual here. The way that they are right now, the whole standards document for language arts is very long. One standard per page, which results in a ridiculously long document. Not to say that it's going to stay like that, but the majority of the information that teachers will see is supporting information. And so just that is a huge change from what the current standards look like because they are listed on a single sheet of paper. For example, all of the, all of the reading literature, standards are listed on a single sheet. All of the reading informational standards are listed on a certain sheet. This is going to look extremely different and will, you know, should not look anything like what teachers have been seeing in the past. So I don't know.
That's helpful. I have a follow-up, I think. You have something else to add?
Oh, she was just reminding me that we currently have our 15% that Kansas chose to add, which highlights Kansas's commitment to six straight writing and also highlights the writing process. So, you know, obviously those will continue to be included and those are not in, in Common Core at all.
Okay. Follow-up for Jeanette, please. Jeanette, will we be seeing changes as we go through this?
Yes. As a matter of fact, the direction for the standards committee was that every single change needs to be tracked so that when we bring it to the board, you will get a copy at the second draft. When we go out for those four regional meetings, you'll be getting a copy before we go out to those regional meetings so that you can see what will be taken out. And if you have any questions or whatever, because we're wanting feedback. So we're wanting feedback from, from board members as well on that. And so what they have been told to do is to track the change, where it has moved. And you will see every comment, every change, whether or not it says, leave it as it is, or change it, or move it. Those will be there. So that information will be given to you to the degree that you wish to view it. We're not going to go through it totally here because that would take an whole entire board meeting. But you will have that to take a look at so that you can see whether, and you can answer to your constituents, yes, there were changes here where they are, and you'll be able to have that information.
All right. Thank you.
As a follow-up to Ken's, you may have presented it and I just wasn't focused on it, but when you have those regional meetings, we all represent those regions. It would be good for us to know that they're there and have an, be an observer, you know, at those meetings.
Right. The purpose of the regional meetings is a lot of our, like our public comments section. Years ago, we used to go out and do public comments. And we switched those to just get public comments on the website. Well, we found out that a lot of people cited, you don't really get it. So we're taking them out because that's, I think, one of our, if you want to learn from your past, I think that's one of the things that we did not do at the last standards review. So we want to be able to take them out this time as well. And we're only doing four because ten board regions is kind of difficult. So we're going to do it regionally. And absolutely, we'll be, we're going to try to do it through service centers because they're handier and easy to work with. And so at that point in time, we'll have, not only our staff, but we'll have the co-chairs of the meetings as well. And definitely you will all be invited to those as well.
And if I might add one thing to that, that she said that I meant to mention earlier, the feedback form that you guys were aware of before we started the review process where the communities can. And one of the documents that Susie and I both used that were listed up there was that feedback form. And the math committee, we, each, each group was tasked with looking at that feedback as they went through the standards. And we actually document, there's some standard wording that's in there that said, this was feedback from the field. So that, so I think that that will carry some weight in terms of the fact that it was from Kansas because in some cases, that was anonymous feedback, but in other cases, they left their name. And we'll be able to say who that person was out in the field that made some recommendations. So I think that will help in terms of shedding some light into the fact that this is a Kansas, Kansas document.
Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we approved the last standards, if I recall correctly, they said they had been a mile wide and an inch deep and they narrowed them and went deeper. Would you say we're narrowing them more and going even deeper? Are we remaining about the same or widening them and making them a little narrower? I mean, what I mean, what can I tell my people?
Well, I think from, from mathematics perspective, K8's staying the same. From the high school's perspective, it might appear as though we're going a little bit deeper, because they are doing more of those in the plus standards to kind of say, you know, leave this for the fourth-year math, so that might leave some more time for them to dive deeper into it. The K8, not as much necessarily, but that's, that's what I would say for the math. We're not, we're not narrowing by any stretch of the imagination. That's not at all what they wanted to do. In fact, they were trying to find more time to get to, able to go deeper into the standards.
And I would, I was thinking about your question for Language Arts and comparing it to the old standards, and I feel like we're, I mean, obviously maintaining the standards, at least for the first draft. And so I think it would, it would be the same, you know. Instead, I was thinking about some of the old standards as, as they were very prescriptive, I thought, and that they would define a lot of the terms that students would need to know at each grade level. And these are, leave much more to the professional discretion of teachers and local school districts to decide what some of the specific curricular elements are. And that is going to be maintained in our, in our, at least is currently maintained in draft one, so.
Thank you.
The indicators for success. Talk about those a little bit. That's, because those are going to be very, those are going to pretty much determine how teachers look at the progress of students, and then connect them to the assessments.
Hmm, yeah. I mean, that's something that will definitely be the focus of a lot of discussion moving forward, and I anticipate a lot of discussion in the, in the, in the first review of them too, because they were drafted by the, the writing committee. So I'm sure not all of the reviewers will agree with all of them even, so.
But eventually, these have to connect, you know, to the assessments. If we're going to assess, we're going to assess what we expect them to know and do.
Well, sure.
That'd be nice.
In some way.
So if we're changing them, especially as I've heard a couple of statements that were moving them from grade levels, that could impact the assessment design that we have right now.
For Language Arts, in the first draft, did not move any standards from one grade level to another.
Language Arts didn't move any?
No.
And for math, CET, Alicia Stoltenberg from CET, the mathematics representative, was there throughout the whole conversation. And anytime there was a shift or a change or whatever, she was made aware of that, was, was taking notes diligently, of course, knowing that she can't really know those until they're approved by, by you guys. But, but it was definitely an awareness made by her, especially at the high school level, knowing that now that there's going to be grades associated with the standards, there may be an overhaul needed for the high school standards. But from the elementary and middle school standpoint, maybe just a little bit of tweaking. But yes, they will make sure that they are aligned with our standards.
And we also representatives from CET, from the Language Arts, so.
The assessment was not one of the priorities for the standards committee.
Couldn't be.
So when they reviewed the standards, they were given the direction to forget, not to worry about what that would do to the assessment or otherwise, you know, other, because they wouldn't make any changes then, you know, being concerned. So the whole idea was, take a look at the standard, to make them Kansas, for sure, and then not worry about where the assessments were. And that was why it was important to have our CET folks present there as well. One of the things I think that we want to try to avoid, and if, and if this is not the case, then I need to be corrected on it, but in our previous standard, not these, but the previous standards before the 2010, we provided indicators. And those indicators, although, yeah, I go back with a good idea gone bad, so I want to make, we don't take a look and find that they're looking at these standards and saying, oh, this is the assessment, and then that becomes the curriculum for these schools. We want to avoid that. We want schools to have the autonomy to take a look at some of those curriculum and choose what's best for them, without worrying about what the assessment is going to do or anything else. We're shrinking the footprints.
Don't make the test up first and then teach.
Right.
Set the standards and let the assessment be a guide for those. One of the, and you've mentioned this before, one of the big issues, when I read the standards and to the critics, who, I could always tell whether they read them or not, what'd you think when you read them? Oh, they were, they were, I just, they were terrible. What was terrible about them? They were just terrible, you know? Because if someone would say to me, well, I couldn't find the standards, I could understand that, because they were defined, because it's, one was on each page, but there was a template that was followed in the writing of them, you know, that you would read maybe 100 words before you even got into the, the, the standard. It was hard even for me to find the standard sometimes, you know? And that was one of the things, confusion says, well, you tried to fool me, you know, and, and they were very hard to read. So are we doing something about making them more reader-friendly, you know, to teachers and to, to, to non-professionals?
I think the whole, for both of us, and I don't want to speak for Susie, but the whole user-friendly approach was just that, right now, the current math for each grade level, it would say critical areas, and there's like two or three paragraphs. Imagine, if you will, cutting that out and making that a supplemental document. So that would be removed from the standards document, but a supplemental document that you could look at the critical areas, K through 12 in mathematics in paragraph form. Or you can then go to the standards and look to the, to the, getting to the point. Cutting to the chase, getting to the point, reading the standards, and looking at it that way. In the math and the ELA, but in math, we have a lot of appendices, a lot of tables. And I would be out in the field talking to teachers, and they would be like, I don't know what table you're talking about. And so there's been a very big push about bringing those tables up into the standards, because they're how to, you know, how, how to understand those standards. And so I think you're going to see that it's going to be very clear where the standards are from the math standpoint, because they took the language, all the, the stuff at the beginning, and kind of making a supplemental document with it.
And that's for non-professionals and professionals, making it easier to read and understand.
Yes, and I think what the-
Educational ease has to be at a minimum.
Yes. The critical areas that'll be kind of cut out and put together will be for teachers to understand, because that will be in math language. But there was talk about making those, I guess, translating them into parent-friendly language, and in a way that says the critical areas for kindergarten would look like in languages, as well as when we modify the parent guides. So I think that there will be those documents. Again, that'll be things that'll come out, you know, once the standards are adopted, and we'll be creating all these supplemental, because the list, the list of documents that they want to create keeps getting longer and longer as we go through this, because they're trying to learn from, from the mistakes of the past.
Thank you. And my last recommendation is, on your timeline, you would insert in there, and maybe you've got this already, Randy, and we just haven't seen it, when you will report to us? Yeah, at which stages and where?
Yeah, we have a short timeline. There's a more detailed timeline when things are coming to the board.
Okay, very good. That's important, because we need to be able to, I think, raise the confidence level that, that this is not being done in secret, it's not being, you know, put upon us, and we're, and we, as a state board, are an integral part of the process.
Right. I think one of the things that we learned with the NGSS standards was, I mean, Matt, every month to you, we're not going to end up being that-
They don't have to be that much.
Not that much. You don't want to see us that often. However, every time the committees do meet, and there are some changes, we will come in and then at least report and have a report for you on the board, or they will anyway.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. And please express to the participants who are on these different committees, the members, how much we appreciate their, their, their time and effort. One of the criticisms that we often received on the Common Core was the fact that, well, are they really Kansans that, you know, do it? I didn't see anybody out of state, you know. Now, I'm not real impressed with Nebraska's stuff, but, you know, it's okay. No, you know, it, it's good to know what, what others are doing, you know, in, in, in terms of communicating, you know, what their standards are, and they're very good. But this is Kansas, this is us. It's, it's not being put upon us, we're putting it upon ourselves. We're challenging ourselves with these standards. Now, and we have to make sure that that's, that's communicated often and often.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to deal with the amended motion, amended agenda that we had this morning. We'll be dealing with the request. Excuse me, can I jump ahead again? Oh, I was too eager to get that. I want to get done. I already did Dawn. Where's Dawn? You're on 13. Don't confuse me, Randy, I'm already confused. You know, poor Dawn is really confused now. The recommended action for the board is, is to respond to the request of council for licensee Gage McGary to permit oral argument to the board in September of 2016, based on the, we're going to have from the PPC. So I'd like to have a motion regarding the direction we're going, but before we do that, I'd, I'd like to hear from Mark regarding what we are working for, what we're looking at.
Mr. Chairman, the, the action item was included in your board packet, and after the, the agenda was circulated, the request was made by Gage McGary's attorney for an oral argument to address the board. The, and oral arg is not required by the, by the statute of the regulations. It's something that's permissive, meaning that the board can permit oral argument. And just as, as a way of historical perspective, a reminder, there were some cases in the pack where oral argument was presented in several years ago, the most recent request in May of 2014, related to a, a request on behalf of a licensee, where that, the board considered that licensee's request for oral argument, and the board declined. I didn't feel like it was a decision that I could make, and we were pressed for time on that issue, so I reached an agreement with opposing counsel, or the counsel for Mr. McGary, that you would simply only consider the request at this time as to whether or not the board wanted to entertain an oral argument. It has been fully briefed, all of the materials have been provided. The board will not consider the merits of the case today. That would be then deferred until September board meeting. And based on the amended agenda, I think it's appropriate to have a motion that would either accept or reject the request for oral argument, and then the board could consider that request.
So if, you know, that if we were to move that the board reject the request of the council of licensee Gage McGary to permit oral arguments in September, that would basically suffice to tell them, no, they can't. Or if we said, yes, they could, if we accepted it.
Once motion's made, then the board could deliberate on it and discuss that and reach that, reach a conclusion as to what the board wants to do.
Okay. Kathy Bush?
I would move that we reject the request for oral argument to come before the board in September on this case.
So we're, you reject the request of council for licensee Gage McGary to permit oral arguments on the board September of 2016?
Correct.
And seconded by Sally Cobble? Any discussion? Jeanette Waugh?
I'm sorry, I hear it by mistake.
Discussion? Okay, then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, now that does not mean you're in favor of them coming before us. It means that your, your, the motion is to reject the request of council. Okay, just to be clear. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by raising your right hand. Steve, how do you vote?
I'll have to abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. It's, we have eight, no, seven, seven, eight, no, eight. Eight. John Bacon is not here. Steve abstains. So we have rejected the request of the council to, to, to speak before us.
And, and all you've done today is take action on the pending request for oral argument, and all of the materials that were included this time will be back before you for an action item to consider the merit of the licensure request and-
And recommendation of the PPC.
And the recommendation of the PPC. And there was quite a bit of, just make an additional note, that there were, there was quite a bit of information, so give yourself adequate time to review that, that material before the September meeting on that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to receive history and government social studies assessment performance levels and cut scores. You don't look like Dawn Gifford.
You don't.
Thank you happily.
He's here.
He's here. Beth, he's right behind you.
So I just, my name's Beth Foltz. I'm an assistant director on career standards and assessments, and I just get the pleasure of introducing this topic this time, and I don't have to do a lot, provide you with a lot of other information. Dawn Gifford, our history, government, social studies consultant, will start the presentation off, and then it's my pleasure to introduce to you someone new, Mary Mathews. She may look familiar to some of you. She's a, one of the new additions over at CET. She's the director of the Kansas Assessment Program. We call it CAP, and we're very excited to have her on board as one of our partners. For those of you that don't know Mary, I just want to give you a little bit of her background and why she's so qualified for this job. She's a native Kansan. She went to public schools in Olathe. She went to K-State for her undergraduate degree. She has graduate degrees from both KU and K-State in special education and school administration. She worked in the Olathe School District, or, oh, she started in Junction City, forgot that, then moved to Olathe, taught in Olathe, and for the last 24 years, prior to her retirement last June, she was the director of school, school improvement assessments and research. At KSDE, we worked with her and knew her as the district testing coordinator at Olathe. She has served on the CAC, the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council, for many years. She's mentored more than her share of new district test coordinators over the years, and she brings that practical knowledge, feet-on-the-ground assessment background that we need to make our state assessments very successful. She has contacts with a lot of different people in the state. They're not afraid to call her, the district test coordinators, if there's a- Present today.
Welcome. Give you the history of this. When we actually did the standards back in 2013, we had assessment in mind. So the format of the assessment was a collaborative work. We held item writing training, and then we had teachers actually do the item writing as long, as well as CET item writers and KSDE staff. I myself wrote some of the items. All the items were included in the assessment, have been for content and bias review. So that's the regular process that all our items go through. So the history government social studies assessment was four parts. I'm going to actually explain part three and four first, because those actually occurred first chronologically, because that was the MDPT, the multi-disciplinary performance task, which was the writing portion. So the field, the window for those tests were first. There was a reading stimuli with guiding questions and documents. I know you're familiar with the MDPT. And then there was an on-demand writing. And so that was parts three and four, and that window for the, the other window opened, which was parts one and two. Part one was historical vignettes. In other words, we gave the context of the question to the students and asked them a single question about that particular thing. It was usually a big idea, federalism in eighth grade, caravans in, in sixth grade, you know, things like that. And then they answered a single question. There were 10 or 11 of those in each assessment, each form, in grade six, grade eight, and grade 11. And then they also had documents, document analysis, where they had actually take two documents, and they would look at those two documents and then be asked a guiding, I mean, three questions about the, about the document. So they would have a document with a purpose, audience, or author kind of question, then there'd be a context kind of question, what was going on time, and there would, then there would be a content question, what was the document actually about? And that made up the bulk of the assessment. It was a very small assessment, as far as item numbers were concerned, less than 15 items on the assessment. And so we were only getting the assessment done, the scoring went really well, and I'm going to turn it over to Mary now and let her talk about how we did the cut scores.
Thanks, Dawn. As we talk about the cut scores in the standard-setting process, we actually started our adventure last May. We brought- actually started our adventure last May. We brought in 26 very talented teachers from across the state. They represented a sampling from each of your districts, and so you were all well represented in the process. They had to be nominated for the process itself. From that, both Don and Beth looked through the applications, looked at the qualifications. We had teachers that had good experience that could participate in the standard setting process, as well as individuals who were also interested. We used a different standard setting model this time. And when I say different, different to me, because it was my first time to get, to have the opportunity to help facilitation of the project. But we used what was called an analytic judgment model. And so I'm going to just try to give you a little bit of background about it. I sometimes think that sometimes when we look at the statistical pieces, it gets to be almost overwhelming. So I'm just going to give you kind of the nuts and bolts for me, the practical person, that it makes sense. We actually had teachers work through this process, and it was, you see the word judgment, we were asking teachers to make judgments about scores and where they felt scores would best fit. It is a different method than ELA in math, but it was one that was most successful, as Don mentioned. Each of the test portions are smaller. For ELA in math, the tests had more items. In this particular assessment, it had fewer items, and the other model that we've used wouldn't have worked in that particular method. We basically knew that there would be four performance levels, one, two, three, and four, just as we had in math. And we tried to divide each of those levels then into ranges of a high, medium, and low. And if we look at it, I think this is probably the more palatable way to look at it, the actual process that we went through. We started our day with these educators, and we asked them to sit the test. There's nothing like in May when school is out and you're most excited to be done, to sit down and now to have to take a history government, social studies test. But they were troopers, I would say. Don, back here on the other hand, might disagree with me. He probably thought that was exciting. But they took the test. We had them take the, and look at the test in comparison to the performance level descriptors. I know we provided you with a copy of those, and you can also see a copy. You've seen performance level descriptors before that we had for English, language, arts, and math. But each of these, we had them for grades six, eight, and 11 for the, and the performance level descriptors allowed teachers the opportunity to say, gosh, if this was a four, what would it look like? These are the things we would expect students to be able to do at the four level. These are things we would expect students to be able to do at the three and a two. And you'll see, we don't have information listed as a one, because typically, in this example, information isn't provided. Once they took the test, once they looked at the performance level descriptors, we gave them a series of exercises to go through. What's nice about this process, they each had to do their part first independently. And if you've ever been in a room of teachers, if you tell them they have to do it by themselves, they don't like that. They want to immediately start talking to their colleagues. And so that was probably the hardest part of the process, was not to talk to their peers, but to be able to independently think through, okay, where would I identify certain scores? Where would I place students on these or these cuts? How would we make that look? Once they did that independently, then they had the opportunity to talk to their peers. And it was probably the best part of the day in the sense of you got to watch the teachers collaborate, you got to watch them talk about, gosh, I think this item, this best marks the cut for me. This is where I think kids that are doing this question meets that. And so it was rich, rich dialogue amongst our group. We had them determine as teams what the cut score would be for that first portion of the test. We did that same thing for the second portion of the test. They had to take it. They had to identify for themselves where they would place the cuts based on their judgment, based on what they knew about students, based on what they knew about the data that we had provided them. They took that information, worked independently, worked as a group, did the same process. And finally, we tackled the piece of the MDPT. We did not make them write a response on the MDPT, but we did provide them with a variety of actual student samples that the students had taken and provided them with the scores as to how scores would have performed on each of those. Once we completed that part, always coming back and looking at our performance level descriptors, we then asked our team, what weights would you give each sections? And what I think you find, or I found most interesting, is the 11th grade information. At grade six and eight, they're very parallel. Six and eight said, gosh, the first part, the historical vignettes, that should be worth 35% of the weight that we give it for the score. The document analysis should be 40, and the performance task should be 25%. And then you can see the figures for eight. But at grade 11, they had probably the liveliest conversation of the group, because they were adamant that writing was such a life skill that kids needed, that that MDPT score deserved 50% of the weight their assessment. And I would say Don and I both bantered back and forth with them, asking those questions, are you sure? What about? And I, we could not move them off-center. They believed that because the writing is such an important life skill for an 11th grade student, that that needed to be a focus for our weighting of each of the different parts of the test. So once all that was determined, along with our cut scores, you can see, we used a scale score similar to what you would have experienced with English, language, arts, and math. And you can see what each of those cut scores represented as defined by the team. In addition, we asked our participants at the end of the process, are these realistic? Are these appropriate? And I only gave you a couple of examples for grade six of some of the questions and the responses. But overwhelmingly, for all of our participants, they all agreed that the process worked, that they were in agreement with what was happening. They agreed with the cut scores that we had set. We can provide you with data for that if you're interested in seeing that kind of information. I'm also sharing with you today some preliminary impact data based on the cut scores that the teachers set. When we look at each of the different grades, and it's a little overwhelming at first, and the color to me is absolutely ugly that's in the background, but I'll get over that. If you look at the different score ranges that were set from a level one to three and four, you can see, looking at levels three and four combined, what percentage of students would score in the top two levels. You can see at grade six, 46.91, really 47% really would have scored in levels three and four. You can see at grade eight, as typical with other assessments, the scores tend to drop. They tend to typically be stronger in our elementary grades and typically tend to drop at our middle and high. You'll see only 38% of the students would have scored in levels three and four combined. And then we get to grade 11, where only 23% of the students, or 24% of the students, would have scored in levels three and four. It's interesting when we think about, remember, there were three different parts to the assessment, and the weight that grade 11 gave the most emphasis to was the writing. We looked, we know that that writing did impact that particular data. When we look at it just as a whole for each of the different grades, it's a little cleaner, little easier to look at. You can see the scoring bands that would occur based on the cut scores that were set. If we think about where we're headed, our next step really is for you to approve the cut scores. We also then, once you have approved the cut scores, will generate the student learning reports for building and district as well as individual students. But I think probably more important as we think about and make these decisions is what happens moving forward. The MDPT was a critical component, really, of that assessment. It was three parts, but the part three was the MDPT. Knowing that with the blueprint changing for Kansas assessments and that we've the MDPT from that blueprint, we know then that we'll have to change our history government, social studies assessment in the future. And so we are asking you to approve the cut scores for this assessment. And we know that in 2018, when history, social studies returns, you will have an operational field test, and at that time, we'll have to set new cut scores. And so that is my quickest and fastest way. In Olathe, they always said, Mary, you can get us through a board meeting fast because you talk fast. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions with my friends, Beth and Don. I'm sure they'll want to also get up here and answer questions if you have any.
Well, two things. First, this is not an action item for today. Rather, the cut scores that you're recommending, we'll vote on next month.
Correct. You'll vote on next month.
And then two years from now, we'll vote on new ones again.
You got it. And by then, maybe I'll have a little more experience under my belt in this job, and you'll all be like, oh, hey, got your back.
Talk longer.
Yeah, exactly. No, I'll never talk longer. I'm a fast talker.
Okay. Just as a question, and I'm not, this is not to refute the 11th grade folks, 50% is pretty stiff
Very.
For, you know, the writing. I mean, it's more of a writing test, or half of it's a writing test, and half of it's a social studies and history test. That skill isn't there. Are there other places that we test for writing? Well, until we changed the footprint, the answer was, this was the English, language, arts, writing assessment and the social studies writing performance portion. So that was it. When we move that to the MDPT, that MDPT to the interim, then, I don't know, we're going to have to redesign the social studies assessments because the MDPT was a big section. So in defense of 11th grade teachers, they were looking at college, those words were in their head, college, career, ready. And they were saying, if a kid cannot write a level three essay, they're not college and career ready. And so that was the thought that they were Don't disagree. That they were working on when they Standards are important. Yes. Yes, without a doubt. Sally Cobble?
Thank you. Let me show my ignorance again here. But when we go to do cut scores, is it unusual for us to have three different standards? I look at writing in 11th grade and that chart. I look at that as having three different standards for three different grade levels. And is that unusual? Are, and did, in our old cut scores, did they show us if the students were getting better or not? Or, so I'm trying to compare apples to oranges, or, and is it unusual to have cuts like this?
In terms of the process we went through, because each of the components of the test are so small, I think Don said in the one section, there's only 10 questions. In ELA in math, when there's 30 questions or 60 questions, we're able to pull all those together. And because these three sections were sent so different, we looked at each three separately and then combined them is what we did for those cut scores. So they set for each one, and then we came back and set overall cut scores for all of them combined. So it was
Well, as a parent, I have a child that does really well in sixth grade. And I know that scores drop when you get into junior high. So I see it drop a little bit. And then this high school, all of a sudden, it drops like it does. What, as a parent, I'm going to go, well, you were so good in history, you know, and now you're not. So is history your passion anymore? No, or whatever. I admire these instructors for saying that writing is that important, because we, as a state board, has said literacy at all levels is important, and we want to bring that up. So I'm having an inner conflict. So it made me wonder, well, do we accept things that are different on every grade level? I'm not sure the message we're going to send with this.
I guess, I think we send the wrong message to, if we tell them that these are comparative kinds of longitudinal kinds of tests. In sixth grade, in sixth grade, they're doing ancient world history. In U.S. history is, you know, the 20th, 19th century, and then the 20th century is 11th grade. The 11th graders, this will be the only time they take a social studies exam. They don't take one in sixth and eighth grade because of the biennial nature in which we deliver the test. So I guess my, I understand your problem with the cut scores and the different weight. That troubled me a little bit. But all of the groups had a very rational, pretty significant agreement on those numbers. We actually talked them off of a little bit, but not much. Well, we'll have new ones in two years, so there's no comparative or longitudinal that. Right. There will not, there won't be any comparative longitudinal Sally's, I think, statement is really good. If we had consistency over, you know, 10 years. But it's not going to happen. No. Well, right. And it's also your grade levels and different subject matter, actually. Okay. Deana Horst, and then Kathy Bush?
Thank you. When, when I look at the fact that it's a multi-disciplinary performance task, I'm assuming that what they're writing about is a history question. So it's their ability to communicate what they know, or what they believe, what they think, an analysis, what, whatever the question really is. So how much of the, of the test, so to speak, is really about the, the historical component and the actual mechanics of
You may know that when it was decided that the history government performance task and the English, language, arts performance task would be put together, neither Susie Myers or myself were real fond of this idea. We had to kind of come to a compromise to get this to work, right? And so we developed common rubrics, a rubric that would be great at use by social studies teachers and the English teachers alike to score these MDPTs. So were the social studies people particularly happy with the rubric? No. Were the English, language, arts particularly happy with the rubric? No. But it was, it was a good compromise. And I think we felt like the rubrics were fine, and the scoring went really well. So I think, I think the field knew how to use the rubrics, and they
So it's really kind of the balance between the two.
Sure, very much so. Jim Porter? Oh, no, I, that's right, Kathy Bush first. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, my
Thank you, Jim.
disappeared. I have got some, some of the same concerns. And when the MDPT is going into, my understanding is more of a formative role, or is it will be done early in the year. I'm not sure why we're putting 50% on it now. The other thing, when I think about, and like it or not, it's going to be looked upon, well, what in the world happened with 11th grade? Did, did the kids lose their brains? So, you know, that's, and they didn't. The other thing I would ask, because you mentioned that the focus on college and career ready, which applaud, of course, we're really talking broader now post-secondary ready. Because as we well know, you know, what was your data say today, Randy? We had as far as completion, 40-some percent, well, 42%. So we really need to be looking at post-secondary. So I kind of got some concerns about that 50% level.
In defense of, in defense of the standard setting group, they had no idea that the MDP would disappear.
Well, and I get that.
So they
Yeah, I get that. I just, I still, and I, you know, I totally support writing and need I totally support writing and need an increased emphasis for the need of writing, which I think the new standards, the ones we had and going into now, what I think we're gonna do, are gonna do that. I'm just not sure this is reefer what? I mean, because you just don't, you're not able, and this isn't longitudinal. I get that. But you're still not able to see what I think we need to see from an assessment like this. You know. I have another comment, but I'll give it later.
Jim Porter?
As is my custom, I'm probably getting ready to really show my ignorance. Did you, Dawn, did you say that the social studies component is only at the 11th grade? Did I hear you say that?
Six, eight, and 11 are the assessed.
I know that, but you, I thought I heard somebody say the social studies part was only at the 11th grade.
It was only, it wasn't shared with English Language Arts at the 11th grade.
Okay, well, then that.
They didn't get an English Language Arts score at 11th grade. They just got a social studies score. At 6th and 8th grade, they got an English Language Arts score and a social studies.
I misunderstood, so, and right. So, my prediction that I showed my ignorance was accurate.
These scores and student individual scores will be shared immediately after we take action at the next meeting.
Not quite immediately.
Okay, as soon as possible. Okay. You know, they took this assessment last year, and we've been a little, and regrettably, it's, we're gonna change it again in two years. So, right now, it is what it is, and it's the best we can, we can do. And shows to some degree, and don't take this personally, the, sometimes the absurd notion of assessment. You know. Thank you for on it. And to the teachers who are out there who work with this, thank them for their patience, their goodwill, and their special efforts to make this successful with their students in a confusing assessment time.
Well, we do have a great group of studies people out there who are doing great work in the field.
Yeah. To the team of teachers who are, I'm sure, you know, very well-respected in the field, they understood too, that what was happening and the role they were playing in this. And I gotta give them credit for all the work that they did. And please thank them on our, and understanding that it was a labor of love. You know. I guess. Yes, they had a love of history. Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you next month and take action on the cut scores. Let's make sure we can stay on the right agenda here. It's getting late. So, we're on item 16, or 15, I guess, 15. And this is to act on payment for the NASB membership dues for 2017. I need a motion to approve our continued participation with NASB. Ken moves. It's move that Kent State Board of Education approve the payment of calendar year 2017 dues for membership and the National Association of State Boards of Education, as well as the National Council of State Education Attorneys. You can see the number seconded by Dina Horst. All those in favor, please signify by raising the right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And Kathy Bush has stepped out. Steve Roberts, your vote? Yes. So, it's an eight, zero. All those opposed, same sign, eight, zero. Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the Act on the Appointment of a Delegate to the NASB Annual Conference, which will be in October. I need a recommendation, and my first question is, well, my first statement is, this is a voting delegate at the Delegate Assembly for NASB, in which the bylaws and any amended actions would be taking place, including election of a new president and president-elect. I should say that actually NASB changed that, they're moving a chair. And it's just another one of those little things you gotta, that will be on the agenda in October. So, I guess what I'm looking for is, is someone interested, or does someone want to nominate someone? Kathy Bush stepped out. We can certainly. No, it's in Kansas City, so it is close. And Carolyn, you have been our representative several times over the last few years, I believe. Have you not?
At least twice.
At least twice.
I did three times.
Okay. Worked you to the bone, you know. Okay, Carolyn is going.
They'll move her.
Move that Carolyn Campbell would be our designee and delegate, rather, at the annual conference, seconded by Jim Porter. Any discussion? Otherwise, we'll have the vote. All those in favor of Carolyn Campbell being appointed as a delegate to our annual conference in October for the NASB, by raising your right hand. Steve, how do you vote? Yes. Okay. Kathy Bush is absent. She stepped out. That's an eight, zero vote. Carolyn, congratulations. Thank you. Okay.
Jim, do you want to alternate at all, just in case Carolyn, for some reason, couldn't go?
Well, actually, there is a process for that, where that she could write in and it could be provided if she couldn't be there, you know. But I don't think we typically have an alternate. But then again, it's always been. Have we? Okay. Well, maybe we should. That's a good, I just, okay, thank you for reminding. Okay. So, the next question is, who wants to be the alternate? Okay, well, I accept that as a motion. Sally Cobble has moved, and it was seconded by Ken Willard, that Dina Horst would be our alternate at the Delegate Assembly for NASB at our national conference in October. All those in favor of Dina Horst being the alternate delegate, please signify by raising your right hand. Steve Roberts, your vote? Yes. Kathy Bush is not here, so that's a eight, zero vote. Okay, thank you very much. I apologize for not remembering that. The consent agenda, we need to vote on that. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, moved by Dina Horst, seconded by Jim Porter. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Steve, how do you vote? Thank you, thank you. Steve, thank you very much. We wish your wife a speedy recovery. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And Steve voted yes too, so that's a nine, zero consent agenda. Okay. Committee report. Ken and Dina, do you have anything to report on legislature? Okay. I'm sure you're all well aware of the, of those who were in the primary in your areas. I'm sure there'll be more legislative forums as we move into the partisan part of the election. Okay, yes.
The only other thing I'd mention is that Representative Scott Schwab's son was the young child that was killed at Schlitterbaum, so.
With a terrible tragedy and.
So, it's a very tragic event, and.
Scott's son and his entire family.
He's always been extremely proud of his young son and very involved in their lives, and I think this is going to be really hard for him. So, if you see Scott, you need to give him a hug.
And we should keep him in our prayers and thoughts.
Yeah, too.
Thank you. And Dina, thank you for mentioning that. Very sad, very tragic. Okay, communications. Sally?
First of all, I'm hoping that the Commission Committee can just meet for just a few minutes after our work session tomorrow. Jim, if you can do that.
It'd be a pleasure.
Okay. The second thing is.
And can Peggy be there as well?
Yes, I've talked to Peggy and Denise. I just didn't talk to you.
Okay, look forward to it.
You have an estimate for this card, but.
No, the whole board doesn't have that, or do they? No, just you.
No, but we had them at one time.
Yes.
They were these business cards, and.
With the outcomes.
Vision on the outcomes on the back. And we had come up with an idea of sending them to the teachers, being one of the ways we communicate, so they have something small to have. And you see the estimate. Jim and I got a little cross what the purpose was. So, he had the bid for 50 of them to be given to every teacher. I only want one for every teacher, so we'll come back with a different bid on that. But in the process of visiting about with this, KNEA has said that they would see that every teacher gets one if we can come up with them to be given. And that was part of our problem. And so, we'll discuss that tomorrow. I wrote down things for Communication Committee. That's all. Everything else is on what we need to do at the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. We had the Extraordinary Needs Committee that. After this, this meeting? Tomorrow, tomorrow. Okay, all right. Otherwise, we are adjourned until tomorrow. Oh, travel, I'm sorry. Who's traveling? Why are people traveling? Okay. Okay. Are there, board member travel, you have a list of current requests included in your board folder? And are those additions or deletions? Kathy Bush?
Yeah, I'm gonna go to the K-toy regional meeting on whatever day the one is in Wichita, but I don't need any salary or mileage. And then question about NASB, because Wednesday, the 19th, if I remember correctly, and I may have stepped out of the room, but that's, we're still in meeting that day, are we not?
Correct. Yes, I'm gonna be absent that day. That's, the 19th is actually when the, they'll have a, well, two things. That's when the Board of Directors meets. And also, there's a pre-conference activity, but that's being minimized in all things considered.
Okay, well, then I'm planning on attending, so I'll be there the 20th.
21st.
21st and.
22nd.
22nd.
Okay. October.
But I know we have to get registered and all that.
Yes. Sally?
Okay, I have, I would like to go to Salina for K-toy. And then, is it in Wichita for K-toy? And then, K-toy, same day. And then, I want to go to NASB. And then I have a migrant meeting, if I may fill you in at that date. It's the first week of October. I don't think I even have that yet. But I have to register for that too, so. It's the 3rd, 4th, and 5th of October.
Am I registering you with me?
I think I've done everything. We'll get together.
Let's go this way. Ken had his hand up first.
Ken? You can take the per diem off of me for the NASB conference. Carolyn?
Kate. She's talking. I gotta wait till she. K-toy on September the 11th.
Both places, or just?
Just to peek unless someone wants to take me somewhere. We're there all over in Kansas City over the park. Just to peek.
Oh, when are we meeting, the 30th?
I have a, one thing that I have is a KAEA or whatever that represents. I'll be coming to Tepica. Is it 30th or the 29th?
It is the.
30th. 30th. All afternoon. August. Kansas Education. Association of Educational Agencies or something. Okay, Janet?
The meeting Thursday.
Attorney General?
I'll be at the NASB meeting.
For the whole conference?
Probably. I'm planning on the whole.
I'll register for the conference, but you're in charge of your own hotel rooms. Is that okay? That way you'll match up.
I don't need a hotel. I don't think so. They're gonna come to my house and pour a lot of tea.
Any other?
I've got, I've got a daughter that's got rooms. I've got other relatives in Kansas City. I have a many rooms to need. I got.
And you're giving them away. Free. It's Jim Porter?
Okay, let's move on. I gotta get to.
Jim Porter?
I'm going to the future of the year, every place except Salina. Just my list.
Well, you're not just coming to see me.
Dina Horst?
And I need to add NASB. Other, well, and we're meeting by Zoom, so the coalition, so. coalition, so I don't need any, thank you for that.
Okay, anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the travel? Thank you. Ken, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor of approving the travel as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign, eight, zero. Now, we're adjourned until 9 o'clock tomorrow morning at the Kansas.
Association of School Boys.
Association of School Boys, no, it was Activity Association. Activity Association.